And Commissioner O’Conne, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eggenberger.
Here.
Commissioner Foster.
Good evening.
Commissioner Janowski.
Here.
Commissioner O’Conne here. Commissioner Singh is not here. Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
And Chairwoman Zubor.
Here. Thank you very much, and I would like to also point out that we have our staff, Patrick Sloan and Erin Schluto here, and our legal advisor, Sarah Gabus. Sorry, I’m trying to go from memory here with everyone’s last names. So, thank you very much for everyone coming. We have some minutes to approve from last month. Did everybody have a chance to look through those?
Now, it’s your motion to approve.
Awesome. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber for approving the minutes of May 1st, 2023. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Awesome. We have an agenda we need to discuss tonight. Patrick, I understand there’s one thing that’s been tabled.
Correct. The applicants for the Wendy’s Restaurant, item number four in the agenda, have requested to be tabled and deferred to the next available meeting.
I’m not sure your mic is on.
Can you hear me now?
Better.
Okay, thank you. I’ll speak closely to it. The applicants for the Wendy’s Restaurant on Michigan Avenue have requested to be tabled to the following meeting, so I recommend removing Wendy’s Restaurant from the agenda and reordering the agenda accordingly.
Okay. Is there anything else we should add or delete?
Nothing else to change.
All right, very good. All right, you don’t have a mic. All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Janowski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, excellent. We are going to move into the public hearing section, oh, I’m sorry, communications section of our agenda. Patrick, I know you forwarded several things to us today.
Correct. We’ve received six public comments via email for the Ford and Napier rezoning, and we also had emailed to the planning commissioners this morning a traffic study that was prepared by the applicants for the Ford and Napier rezoning. And there’s been some updated information added to the packet that we didn’t add last week, which was, one of them was the existing elevation at Greenland and Sagge, just to compare the elevations of what’s being requested this evening. So, the only thing new is everything has been emailed over today.
Excellent, thank you. All right. So, we have, tonight, we have two public hearings. The first is item number 125 PDDA-7760. Fillmore Place, consider PDD amendment for parcel number 125-99-0002-709. This property is located on the west side of Beck Road between Michigan Avenue and Geddes Road. The proposal is an amendment to lot lines resulting in setback modifications. Patrick, could you tell us more, please?
Sure. I’ll just bring up the aerial map here on the, on the screen. There we go. Fillmore Place is a 504-unit apartment complex that is currently under construction, and it’s a planned development district, a PDD, and was approved in 2020. It is on 97.3 acres that’s located on the west side of Beck Road between Michigan Avenue and Geddes Road. And since the PDD and the site plan have been approved, the applicant has obtained the necessary permits to commence construction, and several buildings have been finished so far. The aerial map that you see on the screen was taken in early April of this year, so that photograph is relatively new, and much of the development is under construction in the first phase along the east side of the site, along Beck Road. The request at this time for the applicant is to split the development into three parcels. As you see on the image on the screen, the development is one parcel that’s highlighted in yellow there, and the applicants propose to split it into three different parcels, and taking somewhat of an irregular shape throughout the development, but it’s very purposeful in terms of the areas where they’re financing. And that’s the reason why the applicants are requesting the PDD amendments to be able to have the separate parcels. Because they’re financing parts of the project separately, and a lot of times financial institutions require that the parts that they’re financing be their own separate independent lots, this is the reason for the request for the applicants to split the development into three parcels. It’s not uncommon for large developments of this size, like multifamily projects, to have splits. This also takes place in shopping centers where different stores may own their particular parcel within the center, but the development remains one cohesive development. So, all three proposed parcels will be subject to the same PDD agreement, and they’ll have something similar to an association that oversees the overall maintenance of the development. In the PDD standards of the zoning ordinance, in section 27.04D16, it states that “all land included for the purpose of development within a PD shall be under the unified control of the applicant,” which can be an individual, a partnership, a corporation, or a group of individuals, partnerships, or corporations. So, the PDD standards do recognize that there can be one or more owners of a development, especially when the developments are fairly large. And so, whoever becomes an owner of a piece of property becomes part of the PDD in that regard. So, with the request for the proposed three lots, one important item that we want to note is that there are no changes to the number of units, there are no changes to the layout of the units, no changes to the locations of buildings, so there’s no new encroachment of setbacks to any boundary of the parcel as it sits today. All of the proposed buildings that were approved on the site plan are still in their location, as are the roads, the amenities, and everything else. The proposed modifications are based on what are the proposed interior lot lines. When the interior lot lines are created, and the one parcel is formed into three parcels, those new parcel lines in the interior become lot lines, and as such, they’re subject to setback requirements. And in some cases, they function as front yards, other cases, they function as side and rear yards. So, on page three of our review letter, we have a lengthy table showing the phases, the units, and both the required and the proposed setbacks. So, the table looks like a lot of modifications, but that’s just a result of having those interior lot lines, and some of those units, even if they’re in the central part of the site, because they have a new lot line near them, they could be subject to a setback modification. So, the table is actually, to, to be extra detailed in terms of documenting exactly what those setback modifications are for those interior lot lines. So, that’s the reason for, for the lengthy, the lengthy table and kind of overexpressing exactly all of the modifications that are requested. The PDD agreement has been reviewed by the Planning Division and the Township’s Legal Council. There are some very minor modifications that are recommended to the agreement prior to township board review, but nothing that we consider major. So, with that, our recommendation is approval of the PDD amendment, subject to satisfactory review of the PD agreement amendment by township legal council, and any modifications to the plans to reflect the proper setbacks prior to township board review of the application. That concludes our staff report, and I’ll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here? Okay, could you go to the mic, please? All right, we might have some questions for you. Yes, yes, I was waiting for a motion. All right. We have, we have a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public hearing open. Sir, could you tell us your name and?
My name’s Kevin Spizizen. Address is 29-800-Middle Belt Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan.
You have anything to add to what Patrick said?
Nope, he pretty much, you know, said, I mean, we basically just are doing it for financing, we’re not changing anything. We are starting Phase Two, the construction, so none of those buildings or anything is changing at all.
Okay, very good. If you could just hang out, in case anybody has any questions for you, we would appreciate that.
Okay.
Are there any members of the public who’d like to speak about this project? All right.
Ma’am Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioners Foster. I’m like Summers. It’s not Summers, it’s Foster, sorry, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, excellent. So, I’m going to start down at that end. Brian, what do you think?
Now, Chair, no questions.
Okay. Alan?
Good, thank you.
I’m also good, no concerns.
Weber, anything?
Nothing, I wish, wish they were all this simple.
No questions.
Awesome, all right.
Does this affect any of the phasing? Or same plan?
The phasing lines are the same as what was approved. The only difference that’s taken in place since then is Phase Two has kind of a 2A and a 2B, so they’ve commenced construction on Phase Two, but they’re doing it in 2A and 2B. So, there’s some parts of 2B that they’re not going to quite do until the end of Phase Two, but we’ve worked with our engineering division to make sure that, that all flowed well.
So, no changes to the buildings, no changes to the structures from the original plan, is that right?
That’s correct.
All right.
Janowski?
Nothing.
I mean, I don’t have any issues with this at all, so does anyone want to make a motion?
I’ll make it, ma’am Chair. I move to recommend approval of amendment number one to the Fillmore Place Planned Development District on tax parcel number 125-99-0002-709, as provided in the Plan Development Agreement Amendment and Plan Documents, subject to satisfactory review of the PD Agreement Amendment by Township Legal Council and modifications to the plans to reflect the proper setbacks prior to Township Board Review of the application.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner O’Conne. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, I’m sorry, thank you. You’re right, we need a roll call vote.
Sure. Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner O’Conne, yes. Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Zubor.
Yes, thank you. All right. So, next steps, it looks like you’ve already written that out. I could just read this, couldn’t I?
Sure.
Or you could tell us.
Sure, yeah, I’ll tell you. After any modifications are made to the plans in the PDD Amendment Agreement, then it’ll proceed to the Township Board of Trustees for final action on the application.
Best of luck, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right. And our next item is the Ford and Napier rezoning, item number 070-RZ-7754. We’re considering rezoning for parcel number 079-99-0002-702 from RA Rural Agriculture, Rural Agricultural to R2 Single Family Residential. The property is located on the south side of Ford Road, east of Napier. The proposed use is single-family residential. Patrick, tell us more about this project, please.
Sure, thank you. There’s a 25 and 1/2 acre parcel at the southeast corner of Ford Road and Napier Road that the applicant proposes to rezone from the RA Rural Agricultural District to R2 Single Family Residential. The site has, is vacant and has been used for agriculture for several years. The applicant proposes to construct a detached single-family residential development on the site if the rezoning is approved. Later in the presentation, I’ll get into some of the surrounding areas and the uses. To the, to the east is Parkside Estates, which is zoned R2 Single Family Residential, and to the south is Westridge Estates, which is also zoned R2 Single Family Residential. So, actually, I’ll jump to the zoning at this point. On this map, the area proposed for the rezoning is shaded in the crosshatching, and it’s at the southeast corner of Ford and Napier, and as you see, it’s zoned RA. The areas, Parkside Estates is here to the east, and Westridge is to the south and southeast, and both of those adjacent sites are zoned R2. Directly south of the site along Napier Road is the RA District, which continues south. North of the site, Ford Road, is RR Rural Residential, near the northwest part of the intersection, and then farther east is another portion of Parkside Estates that’s zoned R1. To the west of the site is in Superior Township in Washtenaw County. And I had one more map. With the future land use of the site, the proposed future land use of the site is low-density residential at two units per acre, according to the master plan. And the land that’s illustrated in this map, that is south of Ford and east of Napier, that’s shaded light orange, this is all classified on the future land use map of the master plan as low-density residential of up to two dwelling units per acre. And so, to the east is Parkside Estates, to the south and southeast is Westridge, both of which are zoned for R2 and had been rezoned to correspond with the future land use map several years ago. Some of the review considerations when a rezoning is proposed are in section 27.06D4 of the zoning ordinance, and there are 10 different criteria that are reviewed to determine whether rezoning meets the standards. The first standard is whether the proposed amendment is in accordance with the basic intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. And there’s, there are purpose statements at the beginning of the zoning ordinance that are very general and include generally the regulation of land development and the establishment of the districts, including having provisions for density setback, height, land use parking, tree preservation, et cetera. The zoning ordinance also has provisions for a planned development district, which, based on the proposed layout plan that’s submitted with the application, is what the applicant would intend to pursue if the rezoning is successful. There’s no requirement to apply for a PDD, but it’s indicated on the conceptual layout plan that should the rezoning be approved, and if a PDD is submitted, that is what’s expected in terms of what the applicant’s intents are at this time. The PDD, as illustrated on that concept plan, is an optional development procedure that would have to result in a definite benefit to the site and to the community as a whole. When a rezoning application is proposed, the zoning ordinance requires that a plot plan be submitted, including data about the site, including any proposed layout. So, what the applicant has submitted for a proposed layout is consistent with what the ordinance is asking for a rezoning application, but it’s a conceptual development plan only. That layout plan, it’s not an official PDD plan or a site plan. It’s, and nor is it a condition of a rezoning. The application before the planning commission tonight is a simple, straight rezoning, not a conditional rezoning, so there are, so there are no conditions that are offered. That conceptual development plan is not a condition of the rezoning, and it’s not one that’s being offered as part of the application. Rather, the purpose of the conceptual development plan is to illustrate how a proposed residential development could be located on the site if the proper rezoning, PDD, and site plan approvals were obtained. So, there are a lot of ifs, there are a lot of hypotheticals there, so it’s just a conceptual design at this point. Therefore, the recommendation to approve a rezoning is not a tacit or preliminary approval of the conceptual development plan or of a future PDD or a site plan application. Having said that, our comments on the conceptual development plan are relatively narrow, and it’s just a short list. That conceptual development plan shows 51 units at a density of two units per acre under the PDD standards, and the density is consistent with the proposed R2 district and the classification of the master plan. The conceptual development plan indicates a future PDD application, and it indicates modifications in accordance with a PDD. That’s not a decision that’s part of the rezoning, but it’s just a conceptual review of what the intent of the applicant is. So, beyond just identifying those modifications that are apparent on the plan, we don’t have any comments on the layout in terms of what we like, what we would propose to change, any detailed site plan comments that we often put in our reports, just because it’s conceptual at this point, so we’re not going to give it that level of scrutiny, just to comment on what we observe. The conceptual development plan shows 38.5% open space, most of which is around the periphery of the site, including the southwest corner of the site that includes a creek, which is heavily wooded. There’s one access to the site that’s proposed from Ford Road, which is a paved road under the jurisdiction of MDOT. There’s a secondary access proposed from Napier Road, which is gravel road, and that Napier Road access would be for emergency vehicles only, to provide a second means of access for emergency responders. Any kind of site access could be subject to change based on a future traffic impact study. When we wrote our report and issued it last Thursday, we called it a future traffic impact study because we didn’t know at what point there would be a traffic impact study presented. And then the following day, we were emailed a traffic impact study, which we appreciate having this level of detail at this point, but because it was provided just after we had written our report, and we don’t have sufficient time for our traffic engineering consultant to review the traffic study, our comments on the traffic study are relatively limited. But it was emailed to planning commissioners today just for information purposes only. With regard to the traffic study, when we receive a traffic study, we typically have our traffic engineering consultant review it to make sure that the methodology, the synchro modeling, the data collection, and the conclusions are based on best traffic engineering practices. And so, we have an outside consultant review those traffic studies on behalf of the township and render recommendations and opinions to the township regarding the adequacy of that traffic study. So, that has not yet happened, but it’s just a little background in terms of the process that we follow when we receive traffic studies on development proposals. And then finally, with the conceptual development plan, there’s a proposal for a utility layout for water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer that would be subject to future review by the Engineering Services Division. So, our engineering division has not commented on the proposed utility layout, because for a rezoning application, they typically don’t go into that level of detail. The second criteria for a rezoning is if the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the township, and the comprehensive plan classifies the site as a density of up to two dwelling units per acre. The subject property has been classified as low-density residential on the future land use map since 2004. Currently, the RA zoning class of the subject property stipulates that there’s a minimum lot area of 40 acres, which is a density of one unit per 40 acres. And the proposed R2 zoning permits a density of two dwelling units per acre, which more accurately reflects the low-density residential class on the future land use map. The third criteria is whether conditions have changed since the zoning ordinance was adopted. There have been changed conditions since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1990. The owners of the property, who have held the property for a long time, now desire to sell the property for the purpose of development, similar to adjacent property owners to the east, the southeast, and to the northeast. The demand for single-family residential use continues in Canton Township, and the availability of undeveloped parcels in the community becomes more scarce. For example, the following two properties to the east and south of the subject site are classified as low-density residential on the future land use map of the master plan and have been rezoned to R2 in recent years for subsequent developments. The first is 17.8 acres directly to the east for Parkside Estates. That area was rezoned in 2005 from RA to R2, and the site was subsequently developed for 21 units. The other nearby is to the southeast. The, the area to the southeast is Westridge, and that rezoning was approved in 2004, which rezoned 168.13 acres adjacent to the south and east sides of the site from RA, R1, and Cherry Hill Village overlay to the R2 district. The fourth criteria is whether the amendment would correct an inequitable situation created by the zoning ordinance rather than merely grant special privileges. We believe the amendment would correct an inequitable situation rather than grant special privileges, because the comprehensive plan recommends a zoning of two units per acre, and the subject parcel is adjacent to the R2 district to the east and south, which had been rezoned to R2 from 2004 to 2005. The fifth criteria is whether the amendment would result in unlawful exclusionary zoning. We don’t believe that the amendment would result in exclusionary zoning, because the amendment is a result of the application by the owner of the property, and the subject parcel is adjacent to other R2 zone properties to the east and south. The proposed density of the R2 district is in accordance with the recommended density of two units per acre in the master plan. The sixth criteria is whether the rezoning would set an inappropriate precedent. We don’t believe that the rezoning would set an inappropriate precedent, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan policies and the future land use map. And the subject parcel is adjacent to R2 zone properties to the east and south, which have been rezoned in 2004 and 2005. So, there would be nothing unique about a rezoning here that would set an inappropriate precedent for anything adjacent or nearby. The seventh is if a rezoning is requested, is the proposed zoning consistent with the existing land uses of surrounding property? The surrounding land uses are predominantly single-family residential to the north, east, and south, which is the same use that is proposed by the applicant if the rezoning is successful. To the west in Superior Township, there’s a commercially zoned area at the southwest corner of Ford Road and Napier Road that’s not necessarily an incompatible use, which is a Montessori school. In many areas of Canton Township, there are adjacent uses that are zoned commercial with residential. There are schools that are adjacent to residential neighborhoods, so having a small commercial district across the street at a major corner is not inconsistent with the proposal. The eighth criteria for a rezoning is if a rezoning is requested, could all requirements of the proposed zoning classification be complied with on the subject parcel? Based on the lot area, the configuration, the shape of the lot, all standards of the R2 district could be met, even if a PDD is not granted and the applicant had to use the R2 standards for the creation of lots on the site, the R2 standards could be met. The minimum lot area in R2 is 20,000 square feet, the minimum lot width is 100 feet, so there’s room on the site for plenty of lots. We don’t necessarily know how many lots could be located on the site with a conforming lot area and width, and also get the road and the ponds in, but suffice to say that there could be conforming lots created on the site, and the lot would comply with R2 standards with or without PDD application. The ninth criteria is if a rezoning is requested, is the proposed zoning consistent with the trends in land development in the general vicinity? And we find that the proposed zoning of R2 is consistent with the trends of land development in the general vicinity of the subject property, as the subject parcel is adjacent to R2 zone properties to the east and south, which consist of single-family residential developments that were rezoned to the R2 district in 2004 to 2005. The 10th and final criteria of a rezoning is if a rezoning is requested, what is the impact on the township infrastructure? In terms of water and sewer, there is a synchronous relationship between the water and sewer plans of the township and the future land use map of the township, to make sure that we aren’t allowing for more density on the future land use map than we can service with our water and sewer system. I can’t say it’s always perfect, and oftentimes, when there’s a formal development proposal, there are water and sewer studies to make sure there’s adequate facilities to service the- the development. But there wasn't anything that came from the engineering division that indicated that there was not adequate water or sewer capacity. The proposed conceptual layout plan submitted by the applicant illustrate where they proposed to take their water and sewer connections to the site. Again, those are subject to engineering review, but it's shown on the site for preliminary purposes. For the roads in terms of the road capacity, as we previously stated, Ford Road is paved and Napier Road is gravel. Ford Road is under the jurisdiction of MDOT, and Napier Road is under the jurisdiction of Washtenaw County, but there may be some jurisdiction with Wayne County as well since it's a border road. The road capacity and the traffic impact are typically addressed during a subsequent site plan review and, if applicable, the PDD district review. Since we wrote a report, we've received a traffic impact study that has included some traffic data about the nearby intersections, current levels of service, what the levels of service will be in, I think, 2027 without the development, and finally, what the development's impact on the future level of service will be. So we haven't studied it with our engineers yet. We've gone through the study. We've made some notes in terms of what the existing conditions are and what some of the future conditions will be, but without having our traffic engineering consultant review the traffic study, we can't really provide a lot of comments in terms of staff recommendations on it. The next item in terms of township infrastructure is natural features. According to the maps from FEMA and Eagle, there are no floodplains or wetlands on the site. There's a creek located in the southwest corner of the site that's attributable to the Lower Rouge River. The area around the creek is also heavily wooded. Therefore, if the site is rezoned and the applicant submits a PDD application or a site plan application, we will emphasize either clustering lots or otherwise keeping them away from the southwest corner of the site to try to protect that creek and wooded area as much as possible. And finally, with regard to stormwater management, stormwater management is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County and is reviewed once a development application is submitted. The conceptual development plan submitted by the applicant shows a proposed stormwater pond in the southwest part of the site with an outlet to the creek. For any outlets or impacts in the Ford Road right-of-way, MDOT would have jurisdiction. Finally, staff's recommendation on the proposal is approval based on the criteria listed in the zoning ordinance. However, with the questions about the traffic impact that are noted in the traffic impact study and that the township engineering consultant typically reviews traffic impact studies, it may be prudent after the public hearing and discussing not just the traffic but all elements of the application to defer action and defer a recommendation to the township board until the township engineering consultant has reviewed the traffic study and has rendered comments and an opinion on the study in terms of the adequacy. So that concludes our staff comments, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move we open the public hearing.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eganberger and support by Commissioner Watkins to open a public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mike Knowles, N-O-L-E-S. I'm with the Umler Group at four-nine-two-eight-seven West Road in Wixom. Also with me tonight here is David Straub. He is with MI Homes, and I'm representing MI Homes tonight. I'd like to reiterate and also maybe put a slightly different emphasis on some of the things that Patrick said. He's absolutely correct about everything he said this evening. I've been an entitlement manager and approvals manager for thirty or thirty-five years, worked for various, been in this room multiple times. Many of you recognize me. I've worked for most of the developers, larger developers in the area, Toll Brothers, Polte, Singh, MI Homes. And so I'm very familiar with this process, as are everyone on the planning commission and the staff. And generally, it's the public that is a little concerned about the lack of information or the, of how this process works, what we're doing here tonight. And so I like to take a step back to just sort of explain the process that we're taking. This is the first step. This is the first public hearing for this project. This project will have a minimum of seven public hearings before we're done. It'll take us about a year, twelve to fourteen months, to get through the entire process. The first step is the rezoning, the rezoning from RA to R2. So what we're doing here is, as Mr. Sloan pointed out, is that the zoning was approved thirty years ago, and the master plan has been planned, the density for this piece, the amount, the number of units that would be on this piece, has been in place for twenty years. The master plan is the guide for the township to develop all of their parcels within the township. They review it generally every five to ten years. I think Canton's on about a five-year pace.
We're working on it right now.
Working on it right now. So every five years, they look at the master plan that has been in place for the last twenty years for this particular parcel and say, hey, is this still what we want to do here? What are we planning to do? How is our township changing? What do the people want? And they open that up to public comment and collect, you know, spend a lot of money and a lot of time to collect comments from the community to find out what you want and where you want it. And they take that and they issue this master land use plan, which is what Mr. Sloan was talking about, about it's consistent. All aspects of what we're asking for tonight is consistent with that plan. So I'd kind of rephrase it tonight to say, what we're asking tonight is not approval of fifty-one units. It's not approval of MI Homes' concept plan. It's not approval of traffic or screening or architecture or road layout or stormwater or any of those things. What we're asking tonight is, are you still good with your master land use plan? Because the zoning doesn't change automatically. So the zoning that's been in place for thirty years only changes when an applicant comes forward to change it, unless you do a major rezoning at the behest of the township. So what we're doing is we're asking the township to change the zoning to what they have said they wanted it to be, what they've said they wanted it to be for the last, excuse me, for the last twenty years. And that's what our request is. I'm sorry. This thing's on its last legs. That's what our request is tonight, to change the zoning to what the master land use plan says and what the residents of Canton Township have said they wanted to go. And the reason they do a master land use plan is so that they can plan everything else, so they can plan their sewer, so they can plan their water, so they can plan their tax revenues, so they can plan where will there be commercial, where will there be industrial, where are we going, what are the needs of the township, and how do those change over time? And so this is a first step. Once we do this, then we can take the next step, and that's why I said we'll have a minimum of seven meetings. So to change the zoning from the action we're asking for tonight, we'll be at the planning commission. If we're fortunate enough to get a vote, we'll go before the township board, and there's two readings at the township board to change the zoning. Then we come back with a detailed plan, and we say, okay, now that the zoning has been ratified, that it's still what you want, here's a plan that works. And we give a glimpse into the future of what that might look like by putting a concept plan out that says, yeah, we have every intent of coming forward with the next step, which is a application for a PDD, a planned development district. The same thing that Westridge did, the same thing that Parkside did. In fact, I was with Toll Brothers for twenty years, and I did the entitlement work on the Westridge project. And so what a PDD is, it's a whole different process where you come in and you say, okay, we want to follow the zoning. There's a couple of deviations that we would like to make. Deviations, okay? So deviations always raise eyebrows. What kind of deviations? And we're going to ask for some deviations on this site in the future. And what that deviation is going to be is going to be similar to a project I did for Polte up around the corner here on Warren and Ridge, similar to what I did with Toll Brothers down here at Westridge, which is, we would like to make the lot size slightly smaller without increasing the total number of units. So that's what this first step is, is to make it match the master plan that says two units to the acre. And that's set. No matter what we do with the PDD, this board and this township board and this planning commission isn't going to give us double the units or whatever. We're saying, we'll do what your master land use plan recommends, two units to the acre. So then we'll come back with a plan, and we'll say, okay, instead of making these lots one hundred feet wide, how about if we make them seventy feet wide and still do the same number of units, but instead of cutting down all the trees or impacting that creek that's in the southeast corner, how about we save that? You heard Mr. Sloan say that our concept plan that my company put together has thirty-eight percent open space on it. That's a big number. A lot of times, PDDs and RUDs and sort of these boutique overlay type of districts require that you have twenty percent. It's almost double that. And so what you're trying to do is you're trying to say, let's make this development as nice as we possibly can by preserving treat areas, by preserving creeks, by preserving screening and having a nice view shed along the main thoroughfares for the surrounding community. And that's what we'll do in the next step. And that step will get a whole lot more scrutiny because the township has outside consultants, has in-house engineers, planners, will be required to submit, as Mr. Sloan said, the concept plan's not technically required for this step. The traffic impact is required at the next step, and they'll have folks review our traffic. And we pretty much know what a traffic impact study is going to say before we do it, because if you do enough residential developments like this, you know that whatever the number of units are, multiply it by ten, and that's how many trips you're going to generate. This development's going to generate five hundred trips a day, just like Westridge has two-hundred-and-sixty-four units in it. It generates two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty trips a day, based on the formulas for this. The Polte Development next door, Parkside Estates, has seventy-three units. It's going to generate seven-hundred-and-thirty trips a day. And they break it down based on statistical analysis as to how many of those are going to be in the morning rush hour, how many are going to be in the evening rush hour, which way are they going to be traveling, where are the jobs, where are the businesses, where is the shopping, where are the things that people are going to? And that's what it'll look at, and it'll look at the traffic. And it's always, you know, the traffic is always bad, and the units, you know, everyone always takes a look at how many units and what's it going to be the impact on traffic and what am I going to be looking at? Those are all the consistent things people ask over the course of this development. We're going to answer those questions over the course of this development when we put forth our plan and say, okay, this is what we think would be the best plan for this site to comply with the R2 zoning that we're seeking tonight. So by no means, if we are fortunate enough to get an approval, to go from RA to R2. By no means is our work done. Not only is it going to take me a year and at least seven public meetings, and probably a whole lot of, if any of you folks are neighbors, want to have input onto the plan, you know, folks that know me know that we take your input serious, we meet with the neighbors, we try to work with you on different types of screening. The one I mentioned earlier, the Arbor Hills, Arbor Ridge over at Warren and Ridge Road, met with the neighbors, talked about what kind of trees they wanted, where they wanted the screening to be. In fact, some of the adjacent neighbors ended up hiring us to do some additional work, some engineering work for them on their lot. So we kind of have an open door to take input from the neighbors. And the reason I take a little additional time at this stage of the game to introduce who I am and what we're doing and what the process looks like is because we're going to be here a long time. It's going to take, like I say, between twelve and fourteen months, if we're fortunate enough to get approved, twelve and fourteen months to get this thing approved. And on top of that, not only will Canton Township be approving this project, but we also have five major outside agencies that also have to approve the project. It's no easy putt. It's not a gimme. So we have to go and get approval from MDOT. They're going to require traffic studies, and in fact, this site doesn't, won't hit their threshold to require a traffic study because there's not enough units in it for MDOT to require it, but the township will require it. And because we will have one issued, which we already got ahead of the game and have it ahead of time, then MDOT will take a look at that, and they'll also be reviewing it as well as the township consultants. So we got MDOT. We've got Washtenaw County Road Commission. Patrick mentioned that we were talking about a secondary entrance out to Washtenaw. It's not to be used. It's a fire emergency access out to Napier Road. So that would only be so that in the case of an emergency, that there's another way in or out. If there was a blockage at the main access out on Ford Road, you could still get emergency vehicles in and out of the site. Those have to be paved, they have to be maintained, they have to be plowed in the winter time so that there's access to those things, but nobody can use them. You can't take a shortcut to get to school, to get to work, to get to the gym, to get to the restaurants. They're gated with Knox locks, locks, special locks that the emergency vehicles have. So we have to go through Washtenaw County Road Commission to get that approval. Mr. Sloan also mentioned that we have to go to Wayne County Water Resources Commission to get the stormwater approved. Funny thing about stormwater is that it's constantly changing, and the detention basins and the storage and the treatment are constantly getting bigger, storing more. And currently, there's a big trend in stormwater management to do infiltration first, and I can't think of a single county that doesn't require you to take a look at the soils on your site and see if you can infiltrate into the soil. So if your neighborhood was built, say, in 2004, 2005, say, you know, Parkside or Westridge, it doesn't have any infiltration, but they can constantly are evolving the stormwater management criteria to make the storage of the stormwater, recharging groundwater and becoming greener and greener and larger and larger. And so we'll have to go through Wayne County for that stormwater. We'll also have to go through the state for the sanitary permit and for the water permit. So those are some major entities that we're going to have to go through for these fifty-one units. And like I say, it's going to take every bit of a year if everything goes well. And so we're going to be here a bunch of times. You're going to see my face again and again, whether you like it or not. You'll see my face again and again, at least seven times. I think the last one I did, we were ten or eleven meetings. And so I'll have to account for the things that I say. The things that I say today will be the same as the things I say tomorrow and next month and six months from now and a year from now. And so that's what I do for a living. That's why these guys engage me for these services, because understanding the process is half the battle. Most of the times when we meet with residents, they're pretty reasonable. Adjacent residents, just they want to know what's going on, what is going there? How much are they going to cost? How big are they going to be? Are they going to be higher, taller, more stories than the houses next door? Is there going to be some landscaping? What kind of landscaping? Where is it going to be? Where, you know, so these are all the questions that I know that you have on your mind if you are adjacent residents, and we'll be happy to answer those questions in due time as we go through this process, through our seven public steps, and interact with you and take your recommendations and take your suggestions and try to incorporate them into a plan, because one thing we know for certain is that this commission and the township board is going to listen to you, because that's, who put them there? That's, you guys voted for these folks. They represent you, they don't represent me. What we're trying to do is to take the book, the rulebook, that the township has made with your input and follow those rules through the process. And so that's why I wanted to take a moment to sort of spell out what we're doing here tonight. So respectfully, we hope we can have your support to change the zoning from what was done in nineteen ninety-four to the current master plan that's been consistent and in place for the last twenty years, and we look forward to working with our neighbors and our friends at Canton Township to put together a plan that we are proud of and a plan that you can approve in the future, which, again, is not tonight, just asking to allow us to take that first step so we can move forward down that path. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Knowles.
Thank you, Mr. Knowles. Patrick, your report, you, you talked about what we can consider as part of the review process. And, and I, I wonder if you could summarize that very briefly. I mean, the zoning ordinance, you said consists of 10 standards of review to be considered prior to action. And we have to find as a, I just want the public to understand that as a board, we have to find facts if we wanted to say no to this. My understanding is that we have to find facts that, that, that contradict any of these things that you said.
Sorry. That's correct. The ordinance has 10 different review criteria. And it requires that the planning commission and the township board shall consider those criteria before taking action on any proposed amendment. So it doesn't necessarily mean that they have to, they would have to fail all of them to, you know, to deny a rezoning or vice versa. It's just a consideration of all the criteria that are impactful either to or by a rezoning.
Thank you. All right. Do any members of the public want to address this project? Go up to the mic and tell us your name and address.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson and Commissioners. My name is Joel Keun. I'm a resident of Canton Township, residing at 50712 Southford. I'll try to be slightly more brief than Mr. Knowles tonight. I'm here to ask the planning commission to decline or defer the request 070RZ7754 until several infrastructure issues which affect the safety and well-being of our residents can be addressed. I would believe this would be criteria number 10 of your zoning review. The first relates to traffic. And with the Napier Road access being unpaved, with the slow retail development and commercial development that's occurring in Cherry Hill Village and the planned town square, almost all services that these residents would be seeking would be on the eastern side of Canton in the Ford Road corridor. In the recent MDOT study in partnership with the township, the Canton Center and Ford Road intersection, as I understand it, was the second most dangerous intersection in terms of crashes. Yet, as best I could find in the planning, the only change proposed at that intersection was to install backer boards on the traffic signals, while the remainder of the intersections are receiving much more aggressive treatment for the safety of our residents. Second, there is a quite a hotspot to the east of this planned development at Canton Charter Academy. Canton Charter Academy does not have enough property for the pickup and drop off of students. And the vehicles stack up 30-plus deep along the shoulder of Ford Road, creating a very dangerous situation for many of our residents. It is also actually degrading Ford Road in that area. If you review it, you can see where the fog line, due to the traffic on and off of the road, has been eroded and will only bode poorly for us. I encourage the planning commission to take this into account and see what can be done to address these two hotspots. The second concern is regarding electrical infrastructure. This might require the partnership of the planning commission with DTE. However, this corner, having lived here of the community, has been with significantly degraded and unreliable power. We have had incurred multiple outages which are not related to storms in the area. With the increasing propensity to do developments and of course bring in electrical vehicles now or coming into new residences and so forth, I believe our residents need, you know, a reliable infrastructure here. And this infrastructure needs to be prepared to handle the additional load on it. The final one I would consider for the, the planning commission to consider would be the recreation and health and well-being of its residents in the form of recreation. I think we all learned during the pandemic how important green space and outdoor recreation is. Understand the developer proposes a certain amount of generic open green space, but many of these developments don't include recreation amenities for their own residents. So in lieu of that, I would encourage the planning commission to talk to the developer about potentially making a developmental contribution at the nearby Patriot Park, which is in need of substantial development and is part of the master plan to grow. For those reasons and those concerns, I am asking and encouraging the planning commission to decline or defer the zoning request until these critical points can be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just ask too, if anybody has anything to say that's different from what's already been said? We, we get, we understand. We hear what you're saying. I took some notes. But if you have a different point to make, I welcome you to make it. If you're going to make the same point, we, we already heard it. So just let you know that. Sir, did you want to say something? And if you haven't already, please sign in at the back when you're done to let us know.
Yeah. So my name is Saifullah. I'm resident of West Reg State 51096 Telluride Court. And this proposal is adjacent to my property back, my backyard is associated with this. And I'm representing the, all the residents of my West Reg State who's affecting this rezoning criteria. So I would like to add what he has said already. So I don't want to repeat those stuff. But I just against oppose this proposal because I don't think we have infrastructure for these kind of houses, number of houses. And it's directly affecting our backyard. We paid high premiums to our lots, to tall brothers for, because of these lands. Because we want to have these lands empty and want to see the natural beauties and naturals. So this is going to affect us directly. So these are the few things we just want to add.
Thank you. Anyone else?
20 years now. Sorry, closer. Is that better? Jody.
Jody. Jody Richards. Thank you.
Jody Richards. I live just north of the site. And as Mr. Sloan pointed out, to the east and to the somewhat south are the same jurors or residential, whatever it is. And the south are single-family homes on larger lots. And to the north, the same. We have over acres, five acres, everybody up there. So they only point to what's already over there and they don't tell you anything about up and down. And then over there is the Montessori school and a taxidermy and then a golf course on the opposite corner. So I don't know if you've ever been on Ford Road over in that site. It's only a two-lane road. Excuse me. It's a two-lane road with no left turn lane. And so the people who live in that other estate have to turn left and stop all the traffic along Ford Road to turn left onto there. And the same is going to be done with this one. Because he said there's no access on Napier, plus Napier and Ford is crazy right now anyway. They are resurfacing it, but I believe it's just resurfacing and not putting in a left turn lane. So again, it's going to back up traffic. And again, like Joel said, the electricity is crazy over there. They just put in a new pole on my slot site and we have a constant electricity outage. And it is the only last green site there. If you look, there's housing all around it. There's geese. There's deer. There's other animals on there. And if we have that site gone, there's nowhere for them to go. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello?
Eric Tompkins. Do you need an address?
Yes, for the record, please.
51190 Ford Road. I'd be just north of the site. Never been to one of these. I don't even know what to ask or comment on. I know when we bought this property, we, we did choose it because it was kind of the quiet part of Canton and everything seems to be being swallowed up. And I'm looking at that and they say 51 sites and part of it isn't even developable because of the water. I kind of counted houses next door that. It seems very dense to me. I mean, some of the concerns I would have is, you know, my property is dark. It seems like it's going to be a wall of light in the nighttime now. Where is a road coming out onto Ford Road because they're saying that we're not going to have anything in Napier? I personally don't want 500 sets of headlights shining in my house as things are going in and out of, you know, I mean, these are concerns. Do I really feel that I could say that the site should be, you know, turned down? You know, I don't think as, as one citizen, I have that ability per se. Can I say that's what I want? Yes, I truly do. I think that Canton is becoming a concrete parking lot. And there is a few little pieces left that, that are not. And sometimes I think that, you know, we really need to look at some of that. You know, I don't, one of the things, you know, being on the, on the other side of the street from that, I don't know if the zoning would affect, you know, because we've considered applying for RA. We have a little mini farm there that we raise vegetables and, you know, things like that. I don't know if that would have an impact on our future requests with that. You know, and I, you know, I don't want to reiterate, the traffic there is ridiculous. It's a blind hill. I don't know. I'm not one of my neighbors here. I think that we have a hard enough time getting in and out of it. And I'm not at the corner, but that traffic can be something else when we're coming through there 60 or 70 miles an hour. People have landed in that field just because. So I don't know if I should officially say I would like it denied. But at least, you know, there really needs to be some considerations with some of that, that land.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else?
Hello?
I'm Ryan Zanka, 51320 Ford Road, neighbor to him. Just want to interrupt, yeah, the blind hill coming into Canton. We have a hard, we got to try and gauge from, you know, just show a pullout of our driveway. And from 7:30 to, in the morning to about 8:00 at night, sometimes we're sitting there for 10 minutes. We just pull out of our driveway. So just that impact. And then my wife is someone who, I mean, she's pregnant right now. And trying to turn in and out of our driveway, she's almost getting rear-ended. We have to put our blinker on way before with Napier already right there. People are thinking we're turning on it and we're not. So constant people trying to pass on the shoulder. That's just a big, big thing right now with just that. And then plus like the other developments in the area there. We see their headlights shining in all the time. They just, there's someone who just leaves their headlights on all the time, just shining towards the house. So it's just that's, for us, one of the main concerns would be, you know, traffic and then just the headlights and stuff like that. Because we bought 2021 the, the house there. And we, we were trying to get out, out of Canton. But then, I mean, I've been here now 35 years and I just can't leave the place. But yeah, I mean, it's just, we were trying to find that little, that little like quiet area and we found it. But we're just kind of, you know, hoping that this doesn't happen. We love looking at the farm. So with the animals and all that running across. So that's all I got to say about it.
Anyone else? Yep, okay.
Hi.
I'm Angelique Tompkins, married to Eric Tompkins at 51990 Ford Road. As everyone said, points have been said, well said on a lot of your items because I really forgot about how bad it is for the charter school. My concern is also the traffic, more because of the blind hill. And like you said, there's a lot of things been repeated. But I also have a 15-year-old that's just going to start learning how to drive. And so I'm already fearful in itself and have to take a Xanax or let his stepdad do it. The Canton itself, the traffic is something. I have, there's been screech marks and I will tell you, come summer, I'm concerned that we're having all these consultants do all the traffic decisions and everything besides the residents that are actually there. Because come summer, if you want to test for yourself, know if that's to my neighbors, but put a cop right there at Napier during the summertime and you'll see, because they know the Washtenaw line is right there, you can hear them from the Park Estates gearing up just to beat past the line every summer. And I don't know, we've been there since, I think, 2018. There's not a summer that goes by that there's always like an accident, some fatalities every, almost every week or every two weeks. It may sound like exaggeration, but it is so common that it's scary for me to have my son go out there. There's, there's always cop lights. There's always fire lights or fire trucks and such. My other concern is I am obtaining my Master Gardener certificate of the infiltration of the water. Canton's very water-laden. I understand that. But during the summer or during the watery months of the early spring, our yards get super flooded, especially ours. Our water comes almost up to the house. And then our neighbors and us, and I'm sure there's others, our basements are always flooded. There's always water in our basements no matter what we do. So I understand filtrating it down, which I'm good for. But also I'm not quite sure, I haven't never looked into it, the flow of the water. So I don't know if everybody's working on their cars, not properly taking care of their, granted, there's filtration as it goes down, but to certain levels. If that water flows towards our house or away from the house, I can't remember. But I'm just concerned of it being so water-laid with so much more concrete added and those ditches are not cleaned as well as they should be, that it's just going to make our flooding worse and flood our basement worse than it usually is. So all the other points have been said. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Madam Chairman, I need to close the public hearing.
All right.
Support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Eganberger to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Commission. Let's start with Commissioner Janowski. What do you think?
I have no comment.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Has there been a wetland study on this property? I know the, the website says there's no regulated wetlands, but that doesn't mean that there's any, there's not any wetlands. And I've seen properties developed before where there, there are wetlands that aren't showing up on that map. Do you have a wetland consultant that, that's looked at the property?
Yes. Thank you for your question, Commissioner Cruz. Yes, there has been a wetland study. It'll be part of the site plan and there are wetlands on the site, which-
There are wetlands on the site?
There are. So-
Because your conceptual plan is almost taking up the whole site except the rouge.
There's, there's wetlands along that, along that creek down through there. They don't all show on the official wetlands maps. And so we always take upon ourselves to do soil studies, environmental studies, wetland studies to make sure that when we come forward with our plan, we can show you where the wetlands are, where, how we're respecting the buffers of those wetlands and if there's any permits required.
Do you show them on your conceptual plan?
They're, they're in the open space along the creek on the conceptual plan. So they're not indicated on the conceptual plan as to where they are, but they, they will be certainly labeled on the site plan process, the PD plan, because there's pages and pages of requirements of what we have to show on the plan when we submit at that stage. So yeah, there, there are wetlands on the site. And certainly part of our goal, as I mentioned before, is to preserve the natural features for multiple reasons. One is because people like to live next to them. You heard some comments today and I don't blame you. I'm the same way. Is you like to, to have some big trees and some wetlands and some creeks. And the natural features make it a better place to live, number one. Also heard somebody mention that they, you know, wanted to have parks and they applauded us for 38% open space and made a recommendation about possibly making a contribution as maybe part of our- part of our public benefit to Patriot Park and some of the other things that we can consider during the PDD process. But, yeah, we try to place our open spaces over those features so that they can be preserved for the future, for the residents there, for the neighbors there. And obviously, also for selfish reasons, because we don't want to have to go get a wetland permit to impact the wetlands. So, we try to preserve those in the open spaces. And that's why we ask for things like going to a PDD where you can make the lots smaller and you can stay away from those areas while not exceeding the underlying density. So, yes, sir, there are wetlands on the site. They will be detailed as required through the multiple steps going forward.
Who's your wetland consultant?
I'm sorry?
Barr?
Oh, yeah, Woody Hald, used to be King &amp; McGregor. They recently were acquired by Barr.
Patrick, shouldn't they submit that to you as part of your review? Well, here's my concern is, we could say we can rezone this and we can get into the plan weeds, but the rezone, this is linked to the rezone. So, I guess I want to make sure that, let's say there's sprawling wetlands and you reduce your lots, you kill the project and we've just rezoned it, you know? So, these are the questions I'm asking that, you know, wetlands have to be considered and those have not been submitted.
Yeah, I can address that. So, as I, as there's a process of steps, which I sort of explained on a higher level, but you're bringing up a fantastic point, which is that just because you rezone it in accordance with the master plan, doesn't mean that we're going to be able to develop 51 units. We might only be able to get 20 units. We might only be able to get two units, depending on the next step. And then even if you approve the preliminary, so the preliminary is generally considered where you're vested at your density, your unit count and your road layout. And then when we go to do the engineering, we could lose even more units going along there because of the additional level of detail. But the way that it's, the process is set up is that, first of all, we say, the big picture question is, are you still okay with your master plan? This is your document, your guiding document. Does Canton Township follow its own guiding document? Are you okay with this? Before we spend all the money on the additional steps, the wetland studies and the traffic studies and all of those items that come along the way. So, if we know that, yep, you were okay with R2 and, you know, up to-
It's not just as simple as, are we okay with R2?
Mr. Knowles, can I, can I, we don't really need a lesson about the master plan. We're, we go through this often, so we know, we know what the process is.
I apologize, I was just trying to answer Commissioner Cruz's question.
But I don't think we need to rehash what the master plan says and what it's for. Thank you.
Bonn, just, I have a couple other things. So, if you're rezoning, I guess, Patrick, I'd like to know, if you're rezoning, why are we going with a PDD as opposed to the R2 zoning rules? I mean, what, is that a benefit to Canton to do a PDD versus a straight R2 if you're rezoning?
So, what's being requested in this application is a straight R2 rezoning. So, part of the application, there's no precondition or preapproval of any kind of a PDD. The PDD only enters the equation because it's a form of development that's illustrated on the conceptual development map that the applicant submitted. So, it indicates their intent to apply for a PDD if the rezoning is approved, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the PDD will be approved if the zoning is approved. So, at this point, their application is just for the, just for the rezoning to R2. And then, under the R2 district, if they were to do single-family detached residential, there are a few different options. One option is that they could build a development with a private road and 20,000 square foot lots and however many lots could fit in the development. Another option is they could do a cluster development in the zoning ordinance. A cluster development is an option. It's fairly rare, but we do have cluster developments in the township where there's a minimum open space, there's a certain lot area. And then finally, the more popular development is a PDD. And the reason for a PDD is that it allows for modifications for a development. So, those lots can be even smaller, the lot widths can be narrower, and they can be clustered even more than what a typical cluster development and the zoning ordinance would allow. And then the balance of the site could be, could remain in open space. So, it's a lot, it allows for preservation of natural features. It allows for increased buffers, like as illustrated on the plan here, there's a larger buffer around the periphery. So, those individual lots in the conceptual development, they don't butt up to the adjacent lots there. And it also allows for what are called definite benefits in the zoning ordinance. And the definite benefits can take many forms. It can be preservation of open space, it can be preservation of natural features, it can be high, high-quality architectural features or elements of the site that are unique that can become community benefits as a whole. So, every project is looked at individually in terms of what their community or their definite benefit could be. But that's, that's a requirement to getting a PD approval, is there have to be a certain definite benefit or definite benefits plural, that are a benefit to the site and to the community as a whole.
I'm going to touch on two quick things and I'm going to move on here. The traffic is a huge item and everyone's brought that up. The traffic study was submitted at the last hour. Your engineer didn't get a chance to look at it. Joel has brought up a couple of good points about this charter school. There's a backup on Ford Road. I'd like that traffic engineer to take that into account. That, that may have not have been during peak hours, but that should be accounted for in the traffic study. I haven't looked at it, but I want that traffic engineer to address that in his synchro model, because it may not be during the peak times. Also, I'd like to see that traffic engineer propose any mitigating traffic improvements, like an additional lane tapers to mitigate that traffic. And, you know, it's important for a rezone to have the infrastructure master planned so you don't get backups and nightmares. I mean, there's a lot of problem areas along Ford Road. The second point I want to make is the water and sewer, you touched on, there should be capacity. I'd like the engineer to take a closer look to make sure there is capacity. The last thing we want is the adjacent areas are suffering because of low water and low sewer, because they didn't forecast the demand properly. But if we can just take a closer look at those things. I think those things are important before we vote on a rezone. I'd like to defer it. Just my opinion.
Well, sewer, water capacity, they are elements of public infrastructure that are part of the review criteria. So, those are things we can go back and ask our engineering division. With the charter school, what I can say about the traffic impact study is I think the study was on a Tuesday school day sometime in May when school was in session. This is on the aerial photo here, on the far left side, this is the intersection of Ford Road and Ridge Road. And farther east, this boulevard on the north side of Ford Road, this is the Canton Charter Academy where I've, I used to commute several years ago, taking Ford Road West and that drive would back up quite a bit onto Ford Road. I've experienced that many times as an AM commuter. And then the PM, peak hour for the, for the school is a little bit earlier than the work peak hour. But as, looking at the aerial, and this aerial might not do it justice, but if you're out on the road, you see where that shoulder gets worn down by cars stacking up there waiting to turn in. And so, either the cars are on the shoulder waiting to turn in and they're eroding the shoulder, or if the cars are onto Ford Road, they back up Ford Road farther east of Ridge. I know the traffic study addresses the intersection of Ford and Ridge in terms of capacity and some of the modeling there. So, that is recognized as, as an issue in the, in the study.
My understanding from what you said earlier, Patrick, was that the, the traffic study is not required for the rezoning at the-
I think it should be.
It, it speaks to the road capacity and typically we haven't required traffic studies as part of rezonings. I don't, I haven't been with the township long enough to remember if there's ever been a traffic study as a condition of rezoning. There probably has, I just don't know in what cases those were. But, the road network, it is part of the public infrastructure that we look at. So, I think there is the option to, to have a traffic study before making a decision on a rezoning. So, in this case, we do have the study, which is the good news. And also, good news is now that school is almost out of session. Anyone doing a traffic study, you want to get those done during the school year, so you really get a valid account on a day when school's open and not on a weekend or a holiday or anything like that. So, we have, we have a traffic study that was done on a school day. I think, I know Plymouth Canton schools were in session on the day it was done. I believe the charter school was as well. So, we have something that our consultant can review and can opine on.
Also, if you can emphasize the accidents, someone said that there's a high incidence of accidents, that should be factored in the study. And that's not readily apparent when you do a study.
Ms. Foster?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for bringing up the accident rate. I have in my notes, could we, Patrick, ask Public Safety about the accidents at Ford and Napier and see what the rate of accidents are there? I would be curious to know that. You mentioned that this was an exercise in are we okay with our master plan? And I think, you know, as the Chair mentioned, we are working on our master plan. Our zoning ordinance is 20, 30 years old and Canton has changed significantly since the zoning ordinance was first written. And I think as part of the master plan process, we're trying to look at it with a new lens to make sure it still meets the current needs of Canton. I will say that I am highly concerned about traffic at this location. I drive through Ford Road, I go to Lansing a lot for work, and so I drive and get on M14 there. I do so early in the morning when it's dark. It's scary driving there through dark, especially when there's a lot of, like when it's snowing. I drive through there during rush hour at 5:00 PM in the evening and the traffic is just crazy. And I can't imagine adding this much more traffic and capacity to the current road as it currently stands. And now we're thinking about creating a situation where we're not only asking MDOT to make adjustments to Ford Road, but we would also be asking Washtenaw County to make adjustments to Napier. And so, that is a huge concern that I have in moving this forward. That's all I'll say for now.
First of all, I want to say to the people that oppose this, I understand where you're coming from as far as not wanting to see this property developed, the traffic issues aside. The folks who live in West Ridge Estates, I can remember when your property was exactly as this field was, which wasn't all that long ago. And I'm sure the people who live around that area didn't want to see those subdivisions go up either, but that's how Canton has developed and that's, and that's how, how it's gone. When those subdivisions, your subdivision went up, I figured it was just a matter of time before this piece of property would get developed, however, whatever form it would take. From that standpoint, it's hard for me to be opposed to it in the end, but I understand your concerns. My bigger concern with this, as many people have talked about, is the traffic. Patrick, I did look briefly at the traffic study you sent out today and I didn't, I didn't break down all the numbers and all that, but I can tell you, the charter school and Ridge Road intersection are horrible. When, when school lets out in the afternoon, you get those cars lined up on Ford, going westbound on Ford Road and you have the 55 mile an hour speed limit on Ford Road. I've seen many times when someone gets frustrated and pulls out of that line when you get cars coming down. So, there's going to have to be other improvements made to Ford Road, I think, to make this feasible. This traffic study, the only recommendation it makes is to put a left-hand turn lane into the development on Ford, on westbound Ford Road. What about deceleration lanes for going eastbound and going westbound for that matter, at a minimum? There's just, with the speed limit that is on there and you put 51 homes on this property, given all the traffic you already have on Ford Road, I think it's a recipe for disaster. And I'm not saying I'm opposed to your development, Mr. Knowles, I'm, I get it. But I think there's a lot of, a lot of work that needs to go into this before any serious thought goes into it. And I think serious thought has to be given into a traffic plan if we're being asked to rezone this property. I think it's, I think it's wrong when one of the criteria to think about in a rezoning is traffic, but yet we don't mandatory, make it mandatory to give a traffic study before we make that decision. That's backwards to me. So, and I think I would have, I'm with Commissioner Cruz. I would be in position to defer this decision until we have some more homework done on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eggenberger?
Thank you to all the previous commissioners. I agree with the comments you've made. I also drive on Ford Road and it is scary. And it scares me to think about 51 families moving in here and also trying to have a safe passage onto Ford Road. And I don't want us to be a place that just says, well, sure, we'll just develop and not worry about whether the people of Canton that are already there or the ones that are would possibly move in there be safe. So, I would also like to see it deferred and just get some more information about. Because when, you know, when we talk about number 10, like this gentleman said, I don't know that Ford Road does have the infrastructure to handle more traffic on it. And so, I would like to see what that says.
Ms. O'Conne?
You know, I echo what everybody else has said already on this, on this board. I think we just need some more information. We need to get our consultants to look at that traffic study really in detail and, and I agree with everybody. There's a lot going on here, so I would be okay with deferring it also.
Watkins?
Super quick, I, I'm not an engineer. Commissioner Cruz, thank you so much for your observations. I, listen, I've been doing development for over 25 years and development is a long runway. I get it. Doing entitlements in cities and municipalities is difficult. This is a part of the process, this is the first part of it, not just in Canton, but where everywhere else that you've done developments. This is, this is old hat for you guys. I am concerned about the, the issue that you brought up, the wetlands on the parcel. If it pulls back the ability to do 51 on this, on this particular parcel. Couple of questions and that is, I just want to kind of get a status on the acquisition, right? Where are we in that process? Is there a letter of holding? What do we have now? Does MI hold it right now? Is it still in the hands of the, of the current ownership? If you can't do 51, this project's got a pencil, right? When you talk about the operating pro forma. What, what's the make or break for this? And then if you own it and you can't do 51, you know, then what do you do? Or do you walk away from it and do something different? Those are all important things when you start to think about doing a development. So, again, we're at the front of this thing, but I'm sure these are things that have been thought about already from MI. So, if you would.
Great question, Commissioner Watkins. So, MI Homes is the contract purchaser. They haven't taken down the property. Most of the large developers, as you probably know, make the closing subject to governmental approvals. And so, you get enough time in the contract to be able to get through the process. So, MI Homes, of course, if they aren't able to make their deal pencil, I don't know what the magic number is any more than you do as far as if instead of 51, it's, is it 48? Is it 32? Is it, is it 25? I don't know where their pro forma pencils to, but they do have the option to walk away from the deal before they take down the ground if it doesn't pencil.
Thank you. Anything else? Nothing further. Yeah, I mean, I have to say, my colleagues here have summarized our concerns quite well. You know, there's just a lot of, we have a lot of questions and I think it would be wise for us- So that being said, I think we need a motion.
So you need a motion to defer the vote, is that correct?
Table it.
Okay. I move we table the vote on, do I need to give the whole spiel of what it is?
I mean, you'd want to provide all the reasons for deferring of what, what's to be done.
I did, I don't know why I was going the wrong way. I was trying to get to the top of it. Well, actually, I think Allen is the one that should do it because he had a lot of different things that he was concerned about and I'm not going to be able to say them.
And what, what I had heard.
So I am tabling it down to Allen.
You're tabling your motion to...
What I had heard in the, the conversation in terms of items that the Planning Commission had noted to address is number one, the Township Traffic Consultant Review of the Traffic Impact Study. Another is Engineering Division Review of the Water and Sewer Capacity. Also, the Canton Police Department data on crashes in the area recently. And I have a side note here to reach out to our DTE Facilities Planner about the electricity in the area. So those were the four things that stood out. To me, there may be more, but those were the, the major ones.
That was pretty, pretty accurate.
Well said, Patrick. So I move with everything that Patrick said to table the motion. How's that work?
You'd be tabling action on the application for rezoning.
The Ford Road and Napier Road rezoning.
Subject to the items that you want more information on.
Subject to items we want more information on.
Including the infrastructure related to electricity, traffic.
Infrastructure related to electricity.
Traffic.
Traffic.
In water.
The Napier Road intersection, the sewer and water issues, the police, that was the Napier intersection.
Don't forget wetlands.
And the wetlands.
And, and the issue related to the wetlands. Was that everything, Patrick?
And the issue related to the wetlands. Did I miss any?
Yeah, I had wage room or a Township Consultant Review of Traffic Study. Engineering comment on water sewer capacity, comments from DTE about electrical capacity, crash data from the police department, and yeah, wetland data.
Did I say the DTE?
I think you did. In the beginning, you said electricity.
And I will apologize to whoever has to write this up.
You did a great job.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I think Aaron's, Aaron's taking notes.
All right, there's my motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Eggenberger and support by Commissioner Foster. Commissioner O'Conne, would you call the roll, please? Yes. Commissioner Cruz? Yes, yes for tabling. Commissioner Eggenberger? Yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne, yes. Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Madam Chair Zubor? Yes. All right. We would, we will see you again.
Patrick, there won't be, just to make sure when the...
Process. Correct.
That's correct. For our rezoning, one public hearing is required, so we've had our required public hearing. When this appears again on an agenda, whether it's the next meeting or one of the meetings after, it will be published in our agenda, which will be on our township website, posted at the Township Hall, and our meeting packet will be on usually the Thursday before whatever the next meetings are. So the public can follow along.
We did hear you, so.
Well, and they could all still come to public comment and, and still make comments at public comment. That doesn't mean you're, that you're, can't be heard again on the issue.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, our, our public hearing is over, so we can't keep addressing it.
No, she's asking the process.
Oh, the process? Ah, thank you, okay.
I can, I can answer that. And then at future meetings, when this does come before the Planning Commission, they are meetings that are open to the public. All the meetings of the Planning Commission are public, so the, the public can attend and, and listen. For those items that are on our list, what we'll do is in future meetings, we'll also be issuing additional staff reports that address those things that are carryovers from the previous meetings. So if it's information about the, when our traffic consultant looks at the traffic impact study, that report will be part of the packet and anybody in the public can access that packet and read that report. The traffic study will be included with that packet as well, so people can read that traffic study and our consultant's report. Any information we have about the wetlands from DTE, any crash data that we're able to put in the report will, will be part of the report. So just like with the other items in the report, our, our packet's long. I think this particular packet's well over 100 pages. We include a lot of information there, so everything that we have that's pertinent to the case will be included in that packet. Not necessarily everything here, but we can always go back to some of the previous submittals. But we'll have some other things, probably the conceptual layout we'll carry forward into the next meetings.
You can always come to the next meeting. If it's, assuming this is on the agenda, the next meeting, you can always come to the meeting as, as our council said and, and speak about it in the public comment period.
Can I, can I add one quick thing? That if the Planning Commission does recommend to move this forward, it does go to the Township Board and that's also another opportunity to get the information and to provide public comment.
Our meetings are the first Monday of the month, so.
On the website.
We have a long agenda tonight, so can we answer that very quickly? Is there, I don't, there isn't really a status on, online, right?
Yeah, on the, on the Township webpage, for example, every board and commission has its own page, so the Planning Commission has a page. And on the Planning Commission page of the Township website, it has links to all the Planning Commission packets, both the present packet and previous meetings going back, I think, three years. So the, everything that is here tonight, that packet's online and all future packets will be online as well. Any follow-up questions, either technical or information, you can contact the Planning Services staff anytime.
Yeah, we, we need to move on, so we, we still have four more items that we need to go through tonight, so thank you all for attending.
To the gentleman who mentioned that he bought his home in West Ridge Estates from Toll Brothers and you said you paid a premium for having the open space. If Toll Brothers did that to you or said that to you, made that promise to you, that... No, that's not, I, I'd be surprised if they made that representation because they don't know that. So anyway, that's just my comment about it.
Let's, let's move. Move forward. All right, so we have another item on our agenda tonight, an item of new business. It's 073 SPC 7293 Greenland and Sage. Consider site plan for parcel number 073-99-0001-706, also known as 49491 Cherry Hill Road. The property is located on the south side of Cherry Hill Road between Denton and Ridge Road. Proposed is a building design modification and other site plan changes. Patrick, could you tell us about this project, please?
Sure, thank you. Greenland and Sage is a grocery store and bakery that's currently under development at the southwest corner of Cherry Hill Road and Denton Road. And it is also in a planned development district and it obtained planned development district and site plan approval in 2022. The site is currently under construction and it has its foundation permits, so it's well on its way. At this time, the applicant requests some plan changes and because the site is in a planned development district, many of these site changes are under the purview of the Planning Commission. The first is some changes to the building design. Although the, the building size and the architectural style is consistent with the approved plans, there are some changes proposed that are summarized in four different, four different categories. One is some of the framed brick on the upper stories are replaced with windows. The second is some of the framed brick areas on an upper story are replaced with a non-framed brick. Third is some of the spandrel glass areas on the upper story above the proposed dumpster are non-framed brick. And fourth, some of the spandrel glass areas on the lower story are replaced with non-framed brick. So spandrel glass is basically an opaque type of glass where it looks like a window from the outside, but you can't see through it. Sometimes it's mounted flat onto a wall to give the appearance of a window, but it doesn't really have a function in terms of looking in or out. The next planned change is the change to a dumpster, to the dumpster enclosure. The dumpster enclosure is proposed to expand westward to allow for a larger trash containment area because there's now a dumpster proposed in lieu of a compactor. When the site plan was approved, there was a compactor that was planned, but there's dumpsters proposed instead, which requires a wider area. So as a result, the walls of the enclosure changed a little bit to go from 10 feet high to eight feet high, but it's still required to meet the height requirement of the zoning ordinance. The other change is the landscaping. There's been a little bit of the interior parking lot landscaping and three of the trees that have been removed in the southeast part of the site. And the main reason is because the trash enclosure area is wider, that width encroaches a little bit into the interior landscape area. And as a result, some of the vehicle circulation required to access that enclosure area encroaches into the interior landscaping. So there's been a reduction in the interior landscape as a result. Another change is there's a different decorative fixture that's proposed on the plans than is typically seen in Cherry Hill Village and, which was also on the approved plan. And then finally, there's, this is more coming from staff based on our knowledge of county reviews at this time, and that is a modification to the number of parking spaces. The approved site plan has 88 parking spaces, 82 that are on-site and 16, and six that are on-street spaces. So of the 88 parking spaces that were approved with the site plan, six of those spaces were shown as on-street spaces. We were supportive of the on-street parking spaces from the township standpoint. However, Cherry Hill Road is a public road under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, so all on-street parking spaces are subject to county approval. At this time, the on-street parking spaces are still under review by the county and we don't know how many spaces on-street will be approved, if any. The last communication I saw was today from Wayne County, there may be one or three parking spaces that they might allow on Cherry Hill Road, but that's still in flux. So from a staff perspective, what we'd like to do is a request to modify the parking down to 82 on-site spaces. That way, we don't have to come back again depending on how many spaces are approved by Wayne County. With, with the number of spaces in our analysis, we looked at the Parking Generation Manual by the Institute of Transportation Engineers to indicate that there is probably sufficient parking on the site and that the parking demand may even be lower because a lot of the shoppers will walk from Cherry Hill Village and surrounding areas. And also, I'm going to zoom in a little bit more to this aerial photo. If we go west on Cherry Hill Road, both on the north and south sides of the street, there are a lot of places for on-street parking. So if there were fewer on-street parking spaces right in front of the store and if it was very busy, somebody could park along one of the on-street spaces a little bit farther west and walk up. Might not be ideal in terms of proximity, but there, there are available parking spaces based on what's available there. Going back to the parking lot landscaping, there's a proposed modification request to have less interior parking lot landscaping than is required by the zoning ordinance. Based on 82 on-site parking spaces, the ordinance requires 2,050 square feet of interior parking lot landscaping. And with a slight reduction proposed, there's 1,890 square feet, which is a shortfall of 160 square feet of interior landscaping. In this case, we recommend that a modification be approved for the interior parking lot landscaping because there are a number of site factors and the site is limited by the allowable area for the building, the parking, the circulation, everything else. So what remains is very difficult to achieve in terms of interior landscaping, especially in Cherry Hill Village. If it was a large suburban lot and a large suburban grocery store with several times more parking spaces, something like that could be easily obtained. But in an area like Cherry Hill Village where the site space is at a premium, the interior landscaping is not always easy to achieve. But having said that, the shortfall is only 160 square feet and it appears that all the required trees for interior landscaping are there. So we recommend that the interior lot landscaping be modified as requested on the plans. So our recommendation is that if the Planning Commission is satisfied with the proposed site plan changes, we recommend approval of the site plan amendments for the grocery store and bakery, including approval of a waiver for the interior parking lot landscape requirements in the interior of the lot pursuant to section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance and approval of a modification to the number of required parking spaces to 82 on-site spaces pursuant to section 4.01(c)(6) of the zoning ordinance, subject to all state, county, and township requirements and subject to the light poles and fixtures being consistent with sheet ASP-1 of the approved plans and sheet ASP-2 of the proposed plans. And that's the Amerlux model, they're the green light posts that we see throughout Cherry Hill Village. The applicant has asked us for a specification sheet for that and we're in the process of looking for what the latest sheet is. We've reached out to township departments that may have used the lamps in the past on township facilities, as well as some recent developers to try to find the right specification sheets for those. So we're actively looking for the latest and greatest model sheet for those lights, but we, we do recommend using those fixtures. Those fixtures, they're in the IHA parking lot, they're in some of the other commercial lots there, so we recommend that model for the consistency. So that concludes our staff comments and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here? All right, would you please sit up to the mic and do you have anything to add?
My name is Najim Samoa. I'm the architect for this development. I thank Pat for going through this and working with us. I just would like to note that the proposed changes that we are making to the building design is not to save on the construction or not to, it's really, the design facade revisions were prompted by a, there is a ceiling on the second floor or on the mazanine and the bakery portion of the development wanted additional lighting. So instead of having that, what's termed as a framed brick, we turned that into a finstration, basically windows that can bring light in. So as that facade on, on Cherry Hill changed, then that kind of forced the rest of the, the elevations of the building to follow suit. And that's how this came about. And what we are, in fact, if we look at these revisions versus the revisions that we're, were approved by the commission before, we have more glass on, on the, on the building facades, especially on the north and west areas. So that's as far as the building design is concerned. The next item is the dumpster enclosure and that is not because, again, we wanted to make a change, but we had a compactor there and the compactor was tied with a drain to the, to the sanitary sewer. Because when the trash is pushed into this compactor, there are liquids that, that fall down and that we wanted to capture that and that was not allowed by the engineering. So after discussion, we figured out, let's go back to the basics, forget the compactor and then now we'll do a trash receptacle. And in order to do the trash receptacles, we had to enlarge the enclosure and enlarging the enclosure also impacted the landscaping that, that Patrick was, it's kind of a little snow, snowball effect. As far as the lighting... As far as the lighting, like Patrick indicated, we are not opposed to following suit on whatever the Cherry Hill Village has, and we will provide that. On the parking, we are not giving up because we are also working with the county, not only on providing some parking on the street, but also we are working with them for a seating area that would be within the right of way of Cherry Hill. And we think those parallel, you know, spaces right along Cherry Hill would complement that seating area. So as of the discussion with the county traffic engineer this afternoon, they are considering three spaces instead of the six. Their argument about the six is the fact that it is too close to the intersection of Denton and Cherry Hill, and they are concerned about the site lines. But we're not giving up on the three spaces. So I...
This is not a public hearing, so I'm going to go to the commission. And what does Commissioner Watkins think?
Super quick. I want to keep it moving. So I'm glad that this project is continuing to move, but it seems like we've seen it quite a bit. I don't know, my architectural and engineering colleagues might have to help me. I don't know how often we go back to design docs after we get into CDs, but it sounds like...
Oh, it happens.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we're making a ton of changes here just from a design perspective. And thank you so much for your explanation of, because I was going to ask you about the difference between the compactor and a dumpster. But on the parking, I, again, as someone who was with Wayne County for over five years, there is a vacant parcel that's going to be to the north. It's a very large parcel that sits right at the corner of Cherry Hill and Denton, and I wouldn't expect to get any additional parking there. And I'm not speaking for Wayne County, but that undeveloped parcel probably will not allow for any on-street parking happening on Cherry Hill going forward. So if you stick into it, good luck with that one. Last question's going to be, when are we looking to move to CDs on the actual real property? Do we know what the timeframe is right now to get there? I've been on the commission for what, it's almost two years now? And we've seen this project quite a bit, and I'm hoping we're moving it down the line.
We're under construction. We just completed the storm work. We connected to the pond to the south. We also bored under Denton for the sewer, and we are looking to put in the foundations next week.
Okay, so foundation permits have been pulled, and they're in the ground?
Yes, it has, yes.
Thank you, that's all.
Mr. O'Conne?
Do you happen to have the approved elevations? I've been trying to find them. I just can't seem to find them.
That's the email that you sent us today.
You accept my copy?
The original ones that you sent.
Yeah, so up on the screen here were the ones that were on the approved site plan from last year.
Oh, I see. Yeah. Can you zoom in on like the second from the bottom one or something?
Sure.
So there's the cross-hatched diagonal brick accent panel, and that's, so you can see the difference with what's on sheet. Yeah, so those areas are just plain brick veneer now. And... Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I don't know. I kind of like the old elevations better. It just, I don't know. It just looked, the new ones just look plain now. See, this is the new one. This is the proposed, and it's just, it's just, and it's...
The old one used to be brick, and now we're switching to a CMU type of product, correct?
It's still brick. It's still brick.
No, it's brick or CMU.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Well, but if you look at the south elevation in our packet, we've lost a lot of glass on the ground floor. We've got the doors at the corner. Am I looking at the wrong thing? No, this is the south elevation.
Right.
So like if, over at the left side?
Go to your left.
Yeah. Can you slide over a little bit, Patrick?
There you go.
Huh.
I think it's just shaded in. I think it's just shaded in there.
So we don't, but that's not showing the entrance.
It's the old one.
Old one.
Yeah, it's the old one.
So now we've got that as the glass sliding doors at the very left. And then we've got under that, what's now, what's shown on that as a little awning sort of roof, we've got non-vision glass. But then there's a plain panel in between the two rhythm pieces that's just brick, and there's no storefront, there's no brick veneer accent. So we have simplified this a lot.
Can you show the north, scroll up to the north?
Yeah. I get confused because the elevations are in different places on the pages this time from that. Yeah.
The north is a street view. Cherry Hill.
Patrick, do you happen to have the 3D rendering? Because I think they convey the picture.
Well, no, we're just trying to see the differences.
I mean, I personally like the...
Several of us went to architecture school, so.
I mean, I personally like the old elevations. I'm not saying there's anything. I don't know.
Yeah, it looks like we're cutting down a lot on how much glass.
And I agree with you on the light fixtures. I think the light fixtures should be continuous throughout Cherry Hill Village. I think everything should be the same, so it matches. Dumpster's a dumpster. I mean, I don't know.
I hope that makes it into the minutes. A dumpster is a dumpster.
I don't know. I personally like dumpsters better than a compactor because compactors will make a lot more noise during all hours of the night. But I think we still, we still have the ordinance, right, with trash pickup is certain hours, right? That's a township for them to pick up the trash.
Yeah, there are certain requirements on that in terms of noise and when that can take place.
I mean, my, again, my thought is I like the old elevations better, but I don't know.
I'm going to bring up the proposed elevations just so that we can see the differences.
Thank you.
It might be a little bit easier to... Okay, here we go.
The north, I mean, we still have a lot of clear glass on the north, or a lot of storefront.
The approved one is on top.
The one on top was approved in 2022, and then what's on bottom is what's proposed. So right now, we're on the north.
The one on top just gives it a little bit more character with the brick patterns and...
And what's proposed on the bottom one that's proposed, instead of those brick patterns, there's been glass added to the upper stories. So there's more glass on that north side, which faces Cherry Hill.
Which, again, if I'm looking at this correctly, you have non-vision glass. So I don't know what the proposed was. Was it proposed see-through glass, or was it spandrel glass? I can't remember.
It was, if I may, it was always the same. This is a grocery store and a bakery, and there are many of the functions, although that you see a window on the outside. On the interior, actually, it's a solid wall because it's a storage room or a kitchen.
Sure, totally understand.
Yeah. So that didn't change. And we, what we tried to do is we limited those functions, that kitchen and the storage, is to the east side and to the south side. And that's where we lost some windows on the south side, as you, I believe you mentioned earlier, is that's where the storage rooms are, and that's where those dumpsters are in that location. We wanted to preserve what we think is the most important, or the most important elevations are the north on Cherry Hill and the west towards the development, because that's where the open spaces of these stores.
We have, no, I was going to ask, do we have a color board or anything? Because I noticed like we have a lot of metal, now we have metal panels.
Yes, yes, we do. We do. And that's why I asked for the rendering. I'm sorry, I did not, I don't, do you have it by chance?
Yeah, it was on page one of these. I'm just going to scroll up here.
That's the old version, because there's no rendering in the packet today.
It's true, because the building doesn't really have a back, so to speak.
Right.
Because it's right there on the corner. It's exposed from all sides. But sometimes the, it's like a struggle between the function and the, you know, and the aesthetics and how to... So...
There was a brick, there was a lot more brick and brick detail that was interesting to look at, too. Yeah. And there were just, there was just some shadow lines and...
I don't, I don't know. Again, with the metal, I don't know if it's really Cherry Hill Village type of feeling.
I, oh, there you go. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we really liked that.
I thought it was a good cross between contemporary and Cherry Hill Village.
This is what we have now. This is what we were proposing.
Right. That's the new proposal, not the approved.
Correct, yes.
Oh.
Let me see if I can find the...
That in this packet, though.
Can you put them side by side?
Once he finds them.
I know, I know. I asked too much.
You are really high maintenance.
Alan has asked me to not speak again.
Okay, so I think this is the north west corner.
Yes, that's, that's actually the two elevations. It's the north and the west. Because you see that's...
That is the new proposed.
Yes. That seating area is what I mentioned earlier, what we're working with the county on to install in there right away.
And do you have a color, the color rendering of the old one?
Yeah, I'll have to go back to the old plans. And then this rendering is the northeast.
This is the southwest, I believe. See, we have, we have two entrances for, and even the ordinance requires that. We have an entrance for the bakery on Cherry Hill, and then an entrance to the grocery store on the opposite side.
That's odd. They're separated spaces, right?
Correct. Yes, correct. So what you see to the left, this is the grocery store, and what you see to the right is the bakery.
This is the, this is the approved plan.
A lot more interesting.
We had, we still had the, we had the metal in the original one, too, you know, as well.
I just like the contours and all that in the old.
Yeah, it seemed, the contrast, the different materials, the different textures.
Why are we switching? Why are we proposing the switch?
Well, we switched because like, as I, excuse me, as I said, on the, on the north side, where we have a, we have some interior renderings that were obviously a part of this package. But there's a ceiling on the mazanine. And we wanted to have as much daylight as possible into that bakery portion. Because if you look inside, although these two businesses are separate, when you go on the mazanine level, there's a whole, like, a glass wall that you sit by it and you see the grocery store down there with the activity. So the design is supposed to be, to make this kind of an interactive where you see everything that's going on. And so, so basically, these framed, what we talk about framed in here, these changed to windows, to glass. That's what happened.
I guess I know the interior, it would be better to remain, but it would be helpful to see the interior so that it gives...
It really does it justice.
We've got the storefront all the way around the store, so when you stand up inside there, and there's some openings down through the lower floor of the bakery. So it's just a...
Yeah, you see here...
The mazanine is on sheet fifty-nine. There it is. That's it.
Yeah, yeah. So you see here, this, you have the mazanine here, and you have this bridge. And then you have, all that is bringing basically light in. And all these are, because this portion now, this is that glass wall I was, I mentioned, all the way across there. And then this is all the way high. So it is, yes, there are two businesses, but if you didn't know they are, you wouldn't realize it, you know? And this was our idea behind...
I guess the only thing I want to, I'll just finish up my comments, is just, I think, I think we lost a lot of detail here. We lost a lot of different elements, and it wasn't just adding glass. It was, we really made it look plain looking.
Yeah. Patrick, is it possible to pull up like the, compare like the south or the west, or even the east elevation? Because the north, I think, has changed the least. But if you can pull up the two versions next to each other of one of the other elevations, I think that's helpful to see. We've lost some of the, that basket weave brick detail inset, and it looks like we've also lost some shadow lines, unless you've just chosen to render it a little bit simpler. And then there's some glass panels in between each of those vertical elements that are gone. So we really didn't change any of the upper, the, well, except for that final bay above the door on the right. Most of the upper level is, glass is the same. We've just lost a lot of glass on the lower level.
Yeah, it's not as much detail.
Mm-mm. It just doesn't, it just looks stripped down.
Yeah, no character.
Commissioner Eganberger, did you have anything to say? I mean, I know...
This may shock everyone, but I'm no architect.
What?
I know. I know. But, yeah, I just think it looks plain. Although Alan has asked me not to speak, so.
No motions.
No motions, no motions.
Oh, yeah, you kind of, you kind of wore us all out with that one.
Yeah, I mean, you know what? I think we were pretty excited about it when you came last year, and it was just looking really fun. And this is looking pretty plain.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't have anything to add, other than that I like the original design better, cause it is, it just, it was just more interesting, and I thought it provided a nice, element to Cherry Hill Village, because I think it, it, it represented some of the more traditional style of what Cherry Hill Village is supposed to be, but it also presented some, some, a cross with some contemporary, uh, features as well. Yeah, the, the new design's just not as.
Commissioner Foster?
I don't have much to add, other than what has already been said, but I will just say that, you know, the previous design, I think, would draw people into the building, because it was so interesting, um, and it didn't look. Yeah, I just think the previous design would have drawn people to the building and, and to wanna see what was inside. But, yeah, I agree with what everyone else said.
Ruth?
Uh, I, I agree, I mean, the first design, you showed us something nicer, um, and that was what was proposed and approved. And honestly, it sounds like you're, you're proposing something else to cut costs, and I get it. But the first design speaks more to the character to Cherry Hill. I like the first design better. Um, the other thing is, the dumpster wall, that's completely screening the dumpster, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, the previous wall that was approved was, uh, ten feet high, because the compactor was nine feet high. And the ordinance requires that the dumpster walls be at least eight feet high, or one foot higher than the height of the container it's screening, whichever is higher. So, a nine-foot compactor required a ten-foot wall. With going from a compactor to a dumpster, the height of the wall is eight feet, assuming the dumpster is seven feet or lower.
And the, the enclosure matches the building, is that correct?
Uh, correct, it's, uh, composed of the same brick that the building is made of.
Commissioner Janowski?
I'm fine with the parking, and I'm fine with the, uh, less landscape, but the overall, you know, the change in the elevation, I, I, I see your talent. I'm, I'm wondering if there's some balance between it, where you could go back to the options and, and s- get, get it back to the, the same hierarchy, the same level it was before, without adding the cost.
I, it, it's, uh, uh, I, I understand your, the EV, you know, uh, cause it's, uh, truly, that was not the, the, because we didn't even have pricing at that time, when we made the, the change. Okay, the pricing is coming in actually right now. And it's still, I mean, it, it is substantial, so regardless, uh, I do not see a, an issue of, of maybe even, now, this is our, our bringing that, some of that frame to break, and putting, putting some of that in there to make it more interesting. I, you know, I can't work.
The second time's the one.
We need you, we need you to talk, because the people, there, this is being recorded, so.
Yeah.
We do need to pick your voice.
Uh, if, if this is what, what the commission, I, I understand, I, uh, I, I understand what, the statement that, the statements that you made, and I respect it. But if, if, uh, you know, this is the direction, and with the construction being underway, I, I would like, I don't know if the commission can empower the, the, uh, the planning, uh, or the planner, is to work with us on, 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 on restoring some of that on the, on the new, so.
One other thing to do, your RTU units, it looks like you started doing the study from the street, but it's not complete, I don't, you probably don't have the cut sheets or the buyoffs on them.
We, we did, I mean, we, we, we did, uh, oh, yeah, we, uh, and not only this, but even during the review for the foundation permit, Pat and Patrick required, uh, a verification of this again.
Of the RTU?
Yes, yes, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so the high parapets, I think, are four feet, so they'll screen it, the, the lower, the lower parapets are about a foot and a half, and depending on the angle of the RTU, um, units that are interior. We can't, we can't tell based on the angles whether they will be visible from adjacent properties. There are some, there are some screening mechanisms that can be added onto units that don't puncture the roof, that, um, that.
Standard screening you get, or if you go with the customized color, it won't probably be as, as offensive.
Yeah, so if something.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't want to be laborious points, or I know you have also a long agenda, but as far as rooftop units are concerned, uh, we have to agree on a definition, is what is the sideline? Is a person walking on the sidewalk on the street looking up?
I know what you're talking about, yeah.
Right? But if I go to my apartment on the second floor, I'm going to see more rooftop units. I mean, this is, this is life.
I think it's ground, it is ground level, typically.
Yeah, so.
All right, and I, I echo what, what others have said, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with the parking. I think that, in general, we have way too much parking in Canton. There are probably people who disagree with me, but, um, I don't have a problem with the landscape, but I do, I do really like what you had before for the elevations.
We, again, and, and thank you, and I, I see the, you know, I read the sentiment of, of everyone in here. Uh, we're not opposed to, uh, um, working, even maybe working with the, because you can do also magic with the brick by doing it as a soldier, and then a projection, and this and that. I mean, you can make it, you know, very, uh, we can make it very interesting. I, I would, uh, I really don't want to sound like I am putting you kind of in the corner because construction is underway. But, uh, I don't want that to be a reason for say, well, you know, uh, we are willing to work with you.
Yeah, and we have, we have in the past empowered Patrick and the, and the department, the planning, the planning, um, staff to, to work with people on, uh, on improvement.
We're more than willing to do that.
Yeah.
But, we're talking about, I mean, I agree with what you're saying. But, do we wanna give them the, the authority, we're talking about an aesthetic thing here, that's kind of, is kind of our. Can we, can we, can we do, maybe this is a question for council. Can we s- split this somehow, where, I mean, we're okay, it sounds like if I'm agreeing, hearing everybody on the board here, we're, we're okay with all the other items in this, in this request, but we wanna see some more work on the, on the elevation. Can we approve those others and, and let's see if it's hard for you to work with the planning department and come bring it back to us next month, is, is that proper?
Yeah, certainly, you can do that, so you can table, or, I'm sorry, you can, um, approve the site plan amendment as presented, except for X, what you, what you, the elevation issue that you want to address, subject to him bringing back further information as it relates to what it is you wanna see changed, if that makes sense. So yes, you can approve the other elements of it, and deny that particular request, subject to them coming back with further information.
I suggest you make a motion.
You move that Doug makes a motion?
No, I was told not to.
Well, I can, I know, I know, I know, I know I can't do it as authoritatively as Brian, but I'll try, give it a shot. Where's the model motion at, first of all? I recommend approval of the site plan amendments for the grocery store and bakery on parcel zero-seven-three-nine-nine-zero-zero-zero-one-seven-zero-six, including approval of a waiver of the interior parking lot landscape requirements in the interior of the parking lot. Five point oh-seven of the zoning ordinance, and approval of a modification to the number of required parking spaces to eighty-two onsite parking spaces, pursuant to section four-point-zero-one-C-six of the zoning ordinance. Subject to all state and county and township requirements, and subject to the light poles and fixtures being consistent with sheet ASP-one of the approved plans, and sheet ASP-two of the proposed plans. At the same time, I move to approve the dumpster enclosure, the parking lot landscaping as depicted, the lighting, as we said, the parking and loading, uh, as requested. And that we table the building design request until a, a future meeting, uh, and contingent upon the applicant working with the planning department on a, on a design that, um, appropriate design that is, is a compromise between the original approved design and the current requested design. Is that adequate?
Think so, yes, as long as Patrick got all that down.
Recorded.
There you go.
It's being recorded.
I support.
All right, so we. I think she can. So we have a motion on the table by Commissioner Weber, and support by Commissioner Egenberger. Uh, any further discussion? All right, Mr., Commissioner Ocon, could you call the vote, please?
Or Cruz?
So, so the vote is, they're gonna come back with, you know, revised elevations.
Correct.
Other than that, we're okay.
Were proven.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon, yes. Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Sarah Zubor?
Yes. All right, so we will do our best to work with you on some.
Thank you, you have a good night.
Staff, thank you. Good night. All right, next item on our long agenda. Just for the record, it's way past my bedtime. But I'm yawning. We are skipping, yeah, we're skipping to number five, we're not doing the Wendy's, as per their request. So the next item on the agenda is item zero-one-zero-dash-ADS-dash-seven-seven-zero-zero, Plymouth Canton Montessori School. We are considering a site plan on parcels, uh, numbers zero-one-zero-dash-nine-nine-dash-zero-zero-one-one-dash-seven-zero-one, which is also known as four-five-two-four-five Joy Road, and parcel number zero-one-zero-nine-nine-dash-zero-zero-one-two-dash-seven-zero-one. This property is located on the south side of Joy Road, between Canton Center Road and Sheldon Road. Proposed use is, is an addition to the existing structure, construction of a new building, and other site changes. Patrick, could you enlighten us?
Sure. The, uh, existing Montessori school is, um, uh, located on the south side of Joy Road, between Canton Center Road and Sheldon Road. And it services, uh, children ages eighteen months through, uh, six years old. Uh, the applicant's proposing, in addition to the main structure, uh, the construction of an additional building on the west side of the property, as well as stormwater management. Uh, the proposed additions to the main structure will include four classrooms, two on either side of the main structure, uh, for latchkey preschool, upper elementary, and middle school instruction. Uh, the proposed new building will include a gym and multipurpose room, as well as restrooms, utility room, and storage. Um, the site is in the, uh, oh-one district, uh, which is the office district, and, uh, adjacent to it are, um, to the east is a medical office. Uh, to the south is, uh, Canton Professional Park, which is an office park. Uh, to the north is, uh, a dentist in Plymouth Township, and, uh, to the west is a vacant piece of property that was approved, uh, maybe a year and a half or two years ago for Havens Orthodontics. Um, so it's surrounded by, uh, primarily office-related uses. Um, the schedule regulations, uh, the buildings, uh, proposed structures meet all the setbacks. Uh, for the access management to the site, there's one point of access to the site from Joy Road. Um, the two-way ingress egress from Joy will remain. Um, the aerial images indicate that the circulation pattern is, uh, one-way traffic through the parking lot. Uh, for the traffic, there's a traffic impact assessment that's been submitted. Um, the traffic impact assessment, uh, concludes that a westbound left-turn passing lane is warranted at the site driveway. Uh, the applicant's neighbor to the west, which was Havens Orthodontics, which was approved recently, um, with, and has not started construction, was required to make a similar improvement. Uh, the pavement itself along Joy Road might be wide enough enough, that might be wide enough just to paint the westbound lane, um, the westbound left-turn lane, um, within the existing pavement structure. I'll bring up a site, uh, photo, so that we can see. There we go. Um, so here's the, here's the site, and, um, if we look at, uh, adjacent Joy Road, um, it's actually wider on this, uh, southern lane. And as it, as you go west, as it approaches Canton Center Road, there is a dedicated left-turn lane. So, uh, there's a dedicated left-turn lane in Canton Center Road, and as you go east, the width of the pavement is almost about the same. So, um, there appears to be area on the pavement to stripe a left, uh, turn lane in. Uh, but Joy Road is, uh, under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, so it's subject to Wayne County review for that. Um, for the parking, circulation, and pedestrian access, um, there are twenty-five parking spaces required. Uh, there are thirty-three provided, including three barrier-free spaces, uh, so the site has the, uh, recommended amount, or the required amount of parking. We have a lot of recommendations in our letter, and we received a, uh, letter on behalf of one of the applicant's representatives, um, agreeing to the recommended conditions of the staff review, with further discussion on the elevations. Um, for the architecture, um, we previously noted there were, uh, of, of the additions to the main building. Uh, the proposed gym and multipurpose room include metal panels. Um, a lot of, um, a lot of the, uh, additions have, uh, four-foot brick veneer wainscote, and, um, in all cases, the structures are less than the fifty percent brick required in the office district. Uh, section twenty-six-point-zero-six of the ordinance requires fifty percent brick on all residential, commercial, and office buildings in the oh-one district. And, um, there's brick veneer wainscoting on all facades, um, but they're all far less than fifty percent. And in our letter, we have calculations, some of them range in the single digits of brick, um, others are in the teens, uh, percentage of brick. Um, predominantly for the school, it's, uh, it's wood siding, and the max allowed for wood siding in the oh-one district is fifty percent, and that, uh, max of wood siding is exceeded. Um, the proposed recreation building for the metal siding, the max amount of metal siding in the oh-one district is fifty percent, and that's exceeded, uh, by between seventy-eight and eighty percent, uh, per elevation, um, on the recreation building. So, we have too little brick and too much wood siding on the main building, too much metal siding on the recreation building. Uh, section twenty-six-point-zero-six of the ordinance allows the planning commission to grant modifications from the architectural standards for materials. Um, our recommendation on this is that the plans be revised to increase the amount of masonry on the additions to the main building, and the proposed gym and multipurpose building to comply with the facade requirements, and to maintain the character and aesthetic of the neighborhood. And our recommendation is to allow the existing portion of the main building to be permitted as-is. Um, for the outdoor play area, the site includes two existing outdoor play areas, um, located west of the main building, um, and south, or north of the proposed gym and multipurpose building. Uh, the plan notes that the existing play area located where the proposed south addition is expected to be placed, will be removed, and the play equipment will, uh, be relocated, but that may be removed without replacement. Um, for the landscaping and screening, the landscape plan has been submitted and is designed to comply with the zoning ordinance. Um, the landscape plans also include tree removal and a preservation plan. Um, there are no berm details shown along Joy Road, uh, so we recommend including the required berm along Joy Road. Um, our staff recommendation is that with any soil that may be removed from the pond, uh, that could be, um, material to use for a berm, with the exception of any topsoil requirements, uh, for planting. Um, the lighting photometric plan was recently updated, where it's still under review by staff, but, um, we can confirm whether the lighting will confirm, or will comply with section two-point-one-three of the zoning ordinance. For the signage, we recommend that the existing pole sign in the front of the building be removed and or otherwise replaced with a conforming monument sign that complies with the zoning ordinance requirements. The zoning ordinance requires that whenever there's a site plan review, any non-conforming signs have to be removed. So we recommend that the sign at the front of the building be upgraded to a conforming monument sign. And then finally, for the dumpster enclosure, there's an existing dumpster enclosure located south of the main building that's in front of one of the barrier-free spaces. And it's adjacent to the storage shed. The proximity of the enclosure is not ideal. And we recommend that the enclosure for the dumpster comply with section 2.14 of the zoning ordinance, which would mean the accessibility and the proper screening for the dumpster enclosure so that it doesn't interfere with the required parking. So with that, staff's recommendation is that if the planning commission is satisfied with the overall site plan and design and the architectural materials, our recommendation is approval subject to state, county, and township requirements and subject to the following nine conditions. First, combination of the subject parcels. Second, provide a painted direction arrow along the driving aisles for the motorists. That's on the interior of the site. Third is comply with the recommendations of the traffic impact study, subject to Wayne County review and approval. Fourth, including a sidewalk connection from the sidewalk along Joy Road to the main building entrance. Fifth, clarify the relocated play equipment and provide details for sidewalk connection from the main building to the play area and concrete path. Sixth, provide details for a landscape berm along Joy Road pursuant to Article 5 of the zoning ordinance. Seventh, compliance with the lighting standards of section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance. Eight, provide clarification for ground and building signs and replace or modify the non-conforming ground signs in the front yard pursuant to Article 6A of the zoning ordinance. And finally, nine, address location concerns for the dumpster and shed adjacent to the barrier-free parking spaces and provide details for the dumpster enclosure. The dumpster enclosure must comply with section 2.14 of the zoning ordinance. Alternatively, the planning commission may defer action on the site plan pending receipt and review of any information necessary to make a decision. So again, there's nine conditions. They don't none of the nine address the architecture specifically. That's something that should be addressed either as a separate condition or within the body of the original motion itself. So that concludes our staff review, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Does the project sponsor want to add anything? I'm guessing the guys with the big boxes out there.
My name is Tom Anwell. I'm the builder. I've been associated with the Montessori Group here, the same company, for the last forty years. My kids went to school there. The existing building is on Joy Road. It's been there for over thirty years now. We plan on complying with all these issues. It's not a it's they're they're fairly we've been through a lot for the last two and a half, three months with reservoirs and land and engineering and all the rest of that goes along with it. The parcels need to be combined. Priest Associates are engineers on this. They've submitted the paperwork for combining the two parcels. Originally, these two parcels were owned by the Neff family who started the school fifty years ago. And they bought both parcels. One parcel was turned over to the Montessori Association many years ago, and they still own the rights on the other parcel. Just within the last two weeks, the Montessori Group has purchased the second parcel from the Neff family. So we have the legal documentation to comply with that. And like I say, we've submitted the paperwork through the priest engineering group for the combination paperwork. Paid the money and all the rest of that. It's a one-way traffic. There's a couple arrows on the pavement right now to direct the families for doing it. For thirty years, they've been doing it that way. We'll add we'll add more directional signals on the asphalt. We just had the asphalt repaved last summer. So we can always add more signs to direct traffic, so it's a one-way going around. We did have a fishback did an impact study, or I mean, a traffic study for the for the Joy Road, and they came back with the conclusion that there's a wide enough parking. All we need to do is get with Wayne County and do some re-striping of the existing asphalt, which we're glad to do. And we're working now with Wayne County on that very issue. We've submitted a plan for the re-striping with Wayne County through our engineering people. Sidewalk, we're just going to add a sidewalk strictly from the from the Joy Road right to the building. We've never had one. We've never needed one, but if the if the commission says we should have a sidewalk, we'll build a sidewalk there. I mean, it's just it's not bad, not a hard deal. The play areas, originally, we were kind of vague on it, but since then, where we're going to add one of the additions I don't think we had the site up, but where we're going to add one of the additions to the existing building, there was a parking, a playground there for toddlers. Had some equipment in it. That's going to be removed completely, and all the equipment in it is going to be disposed of. It's not going to be relocated anywhere. We have a very large playground on the west side of the property that's existing under wood chips. We're licensed. We have licensing command, and they measure everything and make sure everything is cool. So we're complying with that. We are going to, we do want to fence in an area on one of the new additions. Twenty-two I had the number. It's a it's just a fence in area on grass. No equipment at all. It's for toddlers, and they like to go out and run around and burn up some exercise. Real young kids that we have. No equipment at all because they're they're really young babies, you know, so that's what they're doing. So it's just a grassed-in area in the front of the building that we want to add in. The berm issue along Joy Road, the landscape architect, when he did his issue, if you look at the landscape thing, he has some berm drawings on there. We don't have any specific data as far as how high it's going to be, but they're all landscape. The berms go all the way across the current grass area. I don't we're not into the woods because we got five almost five acres there, and there's a woods section that touches on Joy Road. So in that particular case, what we're going to end up doing is the berms, our architectural firm will be providing the information on the height of the berm, where the locations are going to be. We've already got the architecture designed for all the decorations on the on the front of it. The sign, we understand the sign's thirty-five years old, and it doesn't meet code. When we built this building thirty-five years ago, it met code, every code in the world. Now everything's changed. So we're in the process now of we're going to redo the sign and get it in a location where it's in the berm where we can see it from the road. We like the idea of having a berm there because the kids, you know, the kids will be playing there in the building. So that's not a problem. We're going to do it anyway because we're going to be we're going to building a retention pond there that's almost an acre in size, so we're going to have plenty of dirt. So it's not it's not an issue. We either haul it away or we make a berm out of it. The dumpster issue, we never made any recommendation on the dumpster. There's an issue with the handicap spot. But when we review the when we review the plans for the dumpster code, we find out that our current dumpster, which met code thirty years ago, doesn't even come close. So we're going to we're going to move the dumpster from its current location, eliminate that plant grass there, and then we're going to move it down to the end of the parking lot where it completely meets all the codes for the dumpster site. Plenty of plenty of access for the trucks to come in, no parking in the way. We'll build a brand-new dumpster housing for that with new concrete, new walls to meet codes. We just finished one in Livonia not too long ago with the steel gates. The other issue, the other issue is this fifty percent brick issue. What what we've done, what currently with with the with the existing building, we have a brick veneer that runs about almost two feet off the ground with a sill. And then then from there on, it's wood siding all the way up, and it's all painted. We everybody likes the look of the building. So we were thinking if we maintain that same look, because the two additions we're going to be adding on are going to be on the east side of the building, where this huge building is sitting there, and you can't even hardly see them anyway. You'll see some from the front. But we wanted to match the existing look of the existing building. Two-foot veneer wood on the top. And that's kind of what we we expect. Under the guise of what we've learned from from Patrick is that this commission has the right to say, we agree with that. We don't necessarily want fifty percent on the new addition and and two feet on the other addition. So but we're flexible to the point where if the commission says, make it fifty percent, then we'll make it fifty percent to do it. Yeah, you can see, this is the front of the building. And behind these bushes on the right side is the brick. All right? The rest of the addition has no brick on it. Do we have another picture of the front of the building? I mean, the parking lot side? Yeah, here. Can we go to this to the this side? There's landscaping here. Now, when we put the sidewalk in, this landscaping's going to go away. But can we look at the other side with this is all brick behind the landscaping. But if you keep going down here, you can see the brick on the bottom with the wood on the top. And there's some brick here around the main entrance of the house. So we were looking for the the buildings that are going to be on the backside of this that would almost mirror this same image and keep that same brick veneer all the way around to keep it looking this way. It's been looking for thirty-five years. A lot of the landscaping conceals a lot of the brick. So that was our first intention. This building's been there a long time. It's been very successful. We've got thousands of kids that went through to preschool through here, and it's in a very attractive building. So we originally, that was our thinking, is maintain the thing. Now, across from the driveway, we were going to add in a multipurpose gymnasium, a steel building that's going to go up. You know, the siding are insulated. And we'll pick the right color that matches everything else. Now, on the gym, we spec four feet of brick. And then the rest would be up. Now, the gym's got twenty-foot walls. Again, we're glad to do whatever the commission wants us to do. I think we're asking, can we try to maintain the existing look of the complex and do that? So those are the basic issues. We have every intent to follow through on these nine issues. Our architectural firm will supply all the new drawings for the for the berm and anything else we need, the relocation of the sign, and anything we need to do to comply with all this. We've been working very closely with Wayne County in regards to the retention pond and the the traffic management and all the other things to go along with the engineering of the outside to do that. To make the retention pond that's going to be large enough for the Hunter Ear Plan, we have to remove fifteen trees. Because they will they're going to they're currently will be in the new retention pond. We have a swale now, but Wayne County's asking for much more. We've been working very closely with Wayne County, and we're pretty much in all agreement with Wayne County's agreement with us and all the engineering behind what we're doing. So it's just a matter of pulling the permits from Wayne County to start doing the retention pond and the landscaping that's got to be behind that. We want to technically, we're adding in four classrooms, but in essence, we're going to modify one of the existing classrooms to make some offices or whatever. So we're adding three classrooms, and the enrollment is really small in these three classrooms. We're bringing over some people from Durborough Heights because we're closing our current location there. But they're small at this point in time. We've never had a traffic problem backing up into this area for thirty-five years. Everything seems to be going well. That's the pitch, you know? Want to get you guys home for the night. So if anything, if we can, if you can say the Montessori Association that currently owns this building will comply with these nine issues completely. You know, no problems at all. So we can start getting our permits and get the concrete in the ground and keep moving forward. What we're asking for from the commission is a change perhaps in the fifty-fifty rule on the brick. But again, we're prepared at this point in time that if the commission says, no, I want fifty percent, then we'll put fifty percent on it. It's not an issue. We won't fight you on that at all. We've been working on this project for the last three months now, and want to start building if we can because we want to have this available. Want to comply completely, and we're going to do everything we possibly can to do that. Any questions from me?
Let you know if we have any. Thank you very much. All right.
Maurice Charbonneau. I'm with JSN Architecture from Berkeley, Michigan. Do you need my address for the firm? Is that helpful?
We've got it on record.
Okay.
I think it's on all your drawings.
I guess I don't really have a whole lot to add to what Tom said except for just, you know, if you have any questions or want regarding addressing the architectural concerns and the material concerns. You know, that's kind of why I'm here, just to see if, you know, if you've got any questions or you need any answers, I can provide them. I can, I guess, I'll try and be brief here and just explaining because obviously you had a long agenda. But I would echo what Tom said, which is the intent, you know, it's a non-conforming building right now. And the intent architecturally was to match the existing building as much as we could. So obviously, that doesn't comply with your current zoning ordinance. But they're really and we've we have investigated because we've been working with Patrick kind of going back and forth and exchanging things. And I don't know that he even has seen some of the the design iterations that we had, but some of the ones that expand the amount of brick used are not what we, you know. Quite frankly, it's and I think I addressed this in one of my response letters, it became an exercise in checking a box and not in what should be done. And so there was some discussion at one time to he said, well, if you maintain the existing, if we kind of mimic what's there and extend it around, because at one time we had we were only where we touched the existing brick was where we were putting in the brick veneer. And so the notion was, well, let's put it around the entire the entirety of the additions. And then that would be something that maybe would be amenable to that. And so that was kind of where we ended up with that. As far as the the gym building, the attempt there was to maintain a kind of a proportional relationship between. So that's why we ultimately didn't put more than the more brick than, say, four feet. And it was the because the wainscot has that proportional relationship with the remainder of the building, you know, the the new proposed gym is much taller. So we had we knew we had to make it taller, but the intent was to keep it at least in a proportional relationship. And so that's why we kind of settled on four feet of brick with a cap similar. The intent with that, just so you know, is even though we're not consistent materially, the intent was to be consistent the intent was to be consistent both in the design but also the color palette. So, we are, the intent is to use insulated panels, which I brought too. Please disregard the color. But this was the intended roof panel. And it's primarily, the reason why we chose this profile was because it offered a different texture to the wall panel, which is intended to be a smoother look but with what they call a tough coat finish. So, it has like a stone kind of. The intent is to match the existing color palette, though. So, this, instead of being blue, it is intended to be charcoal, like a charcoal gray to match the existing asphalt shingles. And then the intent with this is to be a gray. And I'm waiting on the color chart, the actual color chart to see. But they have a, at least when you print it off online, they have a gray that's very similar to the base color of the existing building. And then the intent is to match the brick, which this is kind of the best one I had in my office. We were waiting on a brick sample from the brick rep who's brick tech. So, he said he was supposed to go out and kind of get me a brick sample that we could follow. But the intent is that this would match the existing brick that's on the building. So, this would be used on both the addition as well as the newly constructed gym and multipurpose building. So, hopefully, that answers some of your questions. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions you may have. But that was, I just wanted to kind of summarize what our intent was.
Great. Commissioner Jack Houghton. I can't even say your name anymore. Janowski. Geez. It's too late for me.
So, when you start speaking of the aesthetics and the brick and the new building versus the old building, couldn't you use colors to actually get that whole function to work to get to the content where you're at? And then secondly, we don't have, you can use face bricks, right? Does that meet the code? Because what it does is give them a cost advantage that they probably haven't looked at fully, or I don't know if you have. There's a lot of new products out.
Thick brick, you mean?
Yeah, there's some screw systems that they have now. And there's different ways you're going to process aesthetics.
In some cases, we have had thin brick that's been put on like the outside of concrete walls just to dress it up a little bit. In working with our building division, sometimes there's maintenance issues with the thin brick. If it's not applied exactly right or maintained, sometimes it becomes an issue if water gets behind it.
Okay. But is that prohibited? Because of course, it might provide them an opportunity. It's kind of a going in-between because I see the, I don't know if I could buy off on the, you know, no brick or the reduced brick because the aesthetics isn't really working for me. But what it does is it gives them a cost advantage because they're probably, you know, they have their pro forma or whatever where their costs are. So, it gives an opportunity if the specs were right.
The ordinance, it calls for a face brick. So, the thin brick doesn't meet the requirement. But we have in the past allowed for like half-high CMU where from a distance, it looks like brick. But up close, you see it's, you know, it's half-high block and it's as wide as the block. So, there are some cases where we've had half-high CMU block, like a smooth-face CMU, be used to meet the brick requirement.
Yes, I would like one, just a matter of clarification. When you said the aesthetic, are you mostly concerned with the newly proposed building or the additions or both?
Well, I think that, you know, it's great that the proportions and everything of the building, the existing building, it looks good. But when I start looking at this, you know, saying that the brick doesn't work, on my mind, I still can see the brick working. So, if you did, whatever. So, the total net count is what, 50%? 25%? What is that?
For the total building proposed?
Yeah.
I'm not sure we got the percentage of the entire building. Each elevation ranges from seven and a half percent to 19.1% for the...
And the goal is, the net goal is 50%, right?
Yeah, 50% of the overall building.
If you did something with these newer areas, you made them completely brick. And I don't know how aesthetically you tie in the other stuff, the existing building. But the thing is, is I don't know, I don't know what to do with it, you know? But it's still aesthetically, it's just not... No. No. I guess, I guess it's subjective to some point, too. That's my comments.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
I'm trying to make sense of this traffic study. You have 79 students. And you're adding 22. Does traffic ever back up onto Joy?
No.
Never?
Can you come to the mic so that, because we're recording this? Thank you. And tell us who you are.
I'm Springer. I'm the head of school. No, we've had up to 130 students in that building at one time. Traffic has never backed up onto Joy Road.
I'm surprised. This is a lot of students and a lot of parents.
Well, you see, we're open from seven in the morning till six at night. And so, they're not all coming at the same time, for starters. And even when we have a classroom starting time and parents are coming in, it's a long driveway into and around in front of the building. It doesn't back up.
I've seen a lot of schools that have huge snakes and they still back up onto the roadways. So...
It doesn't back up.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just concerned with any expansion. The traffic study doesn't look at your inner circulation. It looks at traffic coming in and out and the improvements on Joy Road. But, you know, that's why I'm asking the question. I don't want to create an issue on Joy Road and no one saw it, you know, even the traffic engineers. So, just a concern. The other thing is, I mean, you've got nine items here. I mean, that's, why so many? I mean, what, I don't get it. Like, why not resubmit the plan and get it right? I just don't get nine items as a condition. I mean...
Yeah, and typically, when the planning commission gets reports from us, typically there are not this many conditions. Usually, it's, you know, handful. Sometimes there are none. It's just state county and township requirements. Sometimes there's a small handful. In this case, the applicants were anxious to get in front of the planning commission. They wanted some decisions on some of the major items, including the architecture. So, in this case, I thought that, like the architecture, getting some indications of whether or not there would be a modification as well as some of the other recommended conditions. So, we also, for that reason, included a model motion for tabling. But because we had gone back and forth on some plan revisions, we wanted to get this in front of the planning commission mostly for the architecture at this point because there's a major decision to be made. And then the others could either be conditions of approval or if there's a deferral to another meeting.
I'm going to let the architecture get passed on because I'm not an expert on that. But, I mean, things like showing the sidewalk, showing landscape berm details, clarification of the signs, I mean, you know, I feel these things should be shown on the plan for us to approve, not a condition for approval. But, you know, that's my opinion on that. So, that's all I got.
The only thing I think that I have to add is on the brick requirement, we do have an ordinance that says that we need a minimum of 50% brick. And I think we should follow our ordinance.
On the new or the existing, do you distinguish between the addition versus the new building?
No.
Commissioner Weber?
I'm glad Commissioner Cruz brought up about the number of items that would need to be added as conditions. My feeling is if you have this many conditions to go through, then your plan probably wasn't complete. And I kind of have a problem with that. If we were talking about one or two things, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be a big deal. As far as the brick and the aesthetic issue, I'm also kind of the mindset, I can live with maybe somewhat of a variance from the 50% brick. But this is quite a bit, especially when we're talking about a bigger building over on the, with the gymnasium and such. I think it's, I think it's a little too little brick. Those are dumb sounds. Sorry.
We're getting, it's late.
You know what I meant. I, too, am concerned a little bit about the traffic, just because I know how Joy Road is in the morning with the high school traffic. I, it backs up because of the high school traffic. And that's another topic completely. But I would hate to add more problem to that issue. If a passing lane is all that's needed, I guess so be it. I'm not a traffic expert. I just know what I've seen. And I think some more, a more in-depth look, I think, needs to be taken at that, whether you get something from our public safety department or the county. But the traffic is a little bit of a concern to me. That's all I have.
May I speak to that? I would like to say with regard to conflicting schedules with the high school, our school starts much later in the morning than the high school. So, the traffic does not interfere. Our students are coming in at a quarter to nine in the morning. That's well into a high school schedule. That's not a problem. We also have been in that building for 32 years. And I do want to restate the fact that we've had upwards of, over 130 students in that building and same schedule and never a backup. So, I have no reason to say otherwise. That has just always been the case. Our numbers are lower right now. And they hopefully will go back up. But I'm not anticipating a backup. It's quite a bit of a distance from Joy Road to the back of the driveway. It's a U shape coming around in front of the building. There's a lot of cars that can line up there. It's not been a problem. We've never even had the cars to Joy Road even. They're coming at different times. It's streaming through. It's a moving line. Or they park. So... Mm-hmm.
I echo the concerns of the number of items, but I guess that's for staff to make sure happen. But I agree with that we need to get the 50% brick. The extra building just looks like a barn. And I think if we have more brick on it, it will look a lot nicer. And I think there's ways to make the additions look nice with the 50% brick and still make them look like they flow with the other ones.
John?
Yeah, I agree. You know, everything around there, we've got that brand-new building hopefully coming on the corner. All the offices around there have all brick. Even the apartments, I think the lower half, the lower levels, all brick. Putting a metal building out there just, I don't think is a good idea. I would like to see the elevations up to today's ordinance. Other than that, it's exciting that you guys are expanding.
It is exciting that we're expanding. Thank you.
Super quick. I think the teams expressed their intent to handle all the actionable items that have been listed. I think once they do that, we'll look at the 50% brick requirement. They said they had no objections to doing so. I think we can move on on this at some point, but only after they address all of the conditions. So, we can move it forward at that time.
So, you're saying we should defer the decision?
Yes.
I would like to just make a plea that I understand your numbers of items and your concern with that. We would wish and hope to do whatever we could with the township to work together and to make some kind of a plan where we could prove as we move along and make these changes and comply with these requests to move forward. I've got 100 students that are going to need a place to go to school in September. I've got to open the doors. If we delay any more, this is going to be a serious problem, not just for the school but for your area. I, my families will not have a place to go. And that is a great concern. So, although I understand your concerns with the number of items on this list, Mr. Sloan is correct. We begged to get in front of you so that we could say, "Okay, we'll comply. We'll do what you need. And we'll do everything we can to work together with you." We want children in the school.
So, after our question, we're in mid-June.
That's correct.
Are we going to get all this construction done between now and September?
Or classrooms up? Yep, we hope to have...
Why are you just coming to us now?
Pardon me?
Why are you just coming to us now?
We've been, we've been doing this since early February.
Working on this for many, many, many months. But we also didn't know that we were going to close our previous school and merge the two together until December. So, this came up quickly for all of us. And it's been really difficult and really painful. It's been painful for our families and for our students. And so, we're trying to do our very best to comply and to make our families happy and to make our children happy and to provide a great school for the area, frankly. We've been here for 32 years. We've been very successful.
All right. I'm sorry, I've got to go back on this. Again, it's mid-June, and this is just a site plan approval. They still have the permitting process to go through. And how long is that going to take, Patrick?
Depending on the building permit jurisdiction, because in some cases, the state of Michigan has building permit jurisdiction for education facilities. So, on that matter, I'll defer to our building division on who's going to have authority there. But there's township engineering review. There's Wayne County review of stormwater and anything that may be the access point to the site. So, those are timeframes I can't really predict.
You said two things right there that caused me grave concern about you being able to get started, state of Michigan and Wayne County. I understand, I hear what you're saying. I don't know. I don't know how you're going to do it. But I think, I think at this point, I think...
Well, I haven't even had a chance to say what I think. I agree with the comments about the number of items. And I understand you're willing to address them. But I also would like to say, I feel that we should look at the requirement for the brick and we should think about that a little bit. And I have to agree with, I think Commissioner O'Conne was the one who said it, or did you say it? Looks kind of like, the gym can really use some aesthetics, in my opinion. The building, it looks like a pole barn and it doesn't look like a school gym. And there's a lot of missed opportunity there, I think, in terms of making it look nice and be an asset to your property. I feel a little bit like you're blaming us for the delay. We're just trying to help. But we, you know, this is the first we've heard of your project. So, we can't say, gee, we're sorry for the delay, you know?
Well, we, yeah. Like I say, we've been dealing with the township now since early February. We've got, we've got seven engineering firms. We've been dealing with the county. We've been dealing with everybody else to get this done. The permits are going to come from the state on this building. I talked to Rob Kramer from the building department, and he doesn't want anything to do with it because it's a school.
Right.
All right? So, the permits are going to come from the state. We've been dealing with the state plans examiners. And they're basically saying... We've been dealing with the state plans examiners, and they're basically saying, we'll help you out, because we know you're in a bind for time, and if you can get these, if you get these permit applications in for the concrete, we can probably return those in a couple of weeks. And then we can start building after that. I know there's nine issues. Most of these issues have already been resolved. And, like, the lighting is an issue. We've already, we have a brand-new lighting plan that was submitted a week ago or so. So, you know, and by the engineer, by an engineer. So, you know, you look at the, you look at the nine items, and I understand it. We're adding a sidewalk in from the street to the building. I mean, we've never needed a sidewalk, but now we said, they want one, so, yeah, we'll put it in. I mean, it's an issue, but it's not...
We've heard all, I don't, it's late, I'm sorry. I'm cranky.
Yeah, all right. So, we're asking, we're asking for you guys to approve us to build this building, because if you deny us right now, based on these nine items...
No.
We're not denying.
We haven't, we haven't voted or anything.
No, no, I understand.
We haven't even given us a chance to yet. So, I think let us deliberate, and discuss what we feel the best next steps are. So, Commissioner Foster, it looked like you had something to say.
No, I was just gonna say, I recognize that they've been working with staff for a number of months, but they still brought us a site plan that does not comply with our ordinances. And I would assume, in those months, there was time to fix that and address that, before it came to the Planning Commission. And so, I would feel more comfortable voting affirmatively on something, once we had something that complied with our ordinances.
Anyone else wanna...
Just, I just wanna say, you said you've been working with staff since February, and I gotta say, even beginning of February, for a project that you want to start in September, is still a short period of time.
Very short.
I mean, you heard the gentleman here who wants, is working on the rezoning, and he's talking about over a year for his project. So I, I feel like a gun's being held to our head, when it's not anything of our doing. We wanna work with you, we wanna help you out, but I'm just not comfortable approving something until it's complete. And I, I'm sorry, I can't do that. I'm happy, again, I'm ha, I'm not opposed to what you want to do at all. I just think you need to tighten up your plan, and get, you know, more in compliance with the ordinance.
Yeah, it's hard for us to approve something based on, you know, drawings that we don't feel are really reflective of what you wanna, what you wanna build, or what, you know, what we would like to see you build.
I can speak on a couple items, just on behalf of township staff, is, we did start working with the applicants in February, and that was their first planned submittal. And our Development Review Committee, which consists of four divisions, it's the Planning Division, Engineering Division, Building Division, and Fire Department. And so our first Development Review Committee internal review was March 2nd. And two major items that came up were engineering-related. First is that our Township Engineering Division wanted a traffic impact analysis, which at that point, we didn't have. The second was that the original plans didn't have a stormwater management plan, and although that's under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, our Engineering Division wanted to see a stormwater design that met county standards, because even though Wayne County has jurisdiction, once they have the pond in the system, that affects all other elements of site development and utilities. So it's important for our engineers to see that. So, our next Development Review Committee meeting was in early May. So there was a two-month time lapse, where they had to get a traffic impact analysis, they had to get a civil engineer to design the pond according to Wayne County standards. So our next Development Review Committee was in May. At that point, there were still outstanding items, like what you see in the report tonight, but at that point, they weren't gonna make the May agenda, because that was right on top of the Planning Commission meeting in May. So we wanted to get them on the next available agenda, which is June. So, it may seem like from February to June, that's four months, but, you know, half of that time was working on engineering with respect to traffic and stormwater management design.
And that's still an ambitious plan for a construction project. I mean, you know, my clients are residential clients, and I tell them, it's probably gonna be a year before you can break ground, so this is extremely quick. Yeah. Anybody wanna make one? Besides you. No, you can make one.
Oh, I'll do it. I move to defer action on the Site Plan Amendment application for Plymouth Canton Monastery School at 45245 Joy Road, parcel number 010990011701, and 010990012701, pending receipt of revised plans that address the comments and recommendation of the Planning Division staff and the Planning Commission.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Foster, and support from Commissioner Weber. Commissioner O'Con, could you call the roll, please? The vote.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes, I wanna add...
Oh, I didn't say further discussion. Let me do that. Go ahead. No, I'm, oh, sorry.
I just want the traffic engineer to look at the circulation, and I know you said it doesn't back up now, but I want them to look at how many students and parents are coming to the site with this addition, and just even a paragraph saying that there's no backups anticipated, it's fine, you know, but I think...
The engineer needs to know that, as an assurance from the traffic engineer, and I don't think it's gonna take much than, you know, a few, a little paragraph by them, just to look at it and stack the cars according to their pickup and drop-offs.
Do I need to amend my motion to include evaluation by traffic engineers? Okay.
Yeah, if you want to make that a condition.
That was very smooth. Support that?
I, yeah, I fully support.
Okay, awesome. Commissioner O'Con, could you call the vote, the vote, please?
Commissioner Cruz? Commissioner Engelberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Con, yes? Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Madam Chair Zuber?
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. I think, so what's, next steps will be for them to work with you?
The applicants will submit revised plans, we'll go through and mark off any of the conditions in our letter that have been satisfied, and then narrow down to few, if any, remaining conditions, before returning to the Planning Commission.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. We have one more item on our agenda for Precision Strip. You've been so patient, sir. I didn't even hear you snoring, so that's good. So we have item number one, item number six, is 140DIR 7797, Precision Strip. They want to consider parking lot modification for parcel number 140990012705 at 5260 South Hagerty Road. The property is located on the west side of South Hagerty Road, between Van Born and Michigan Ave, and proposed is a modification of the parking lot. I don't think there's much to say here, Patrick. I, I mean, he wrote a report, I'm sure he wants to tell us his report. They need 20, and they have 147. I know. But, yeah, go ahead.
I'll, I'll leave it to you, if you need to hear anything from the outside of what's in the report.
And it seems like it's a fairly obvious. Okay, sorry. Do your spiel. Please, please tell us what you want us to know, Patrick.
Well...
Can you give us a synopsis?
Well, there's no way I can say it better than I wrote it, so... So we have a staff's recommendation, is approval of 147 parking spaces, as illustrated on the parking site plan for Precision Strip. The subject of the following conditions. First, the site plan review requirements of Section 27.02 of the zoning ordinance apply for the removal of six spaces, illustrated on the parking plan. So this is not necessarily site plan review, this is just a parking lot space modification that the Planning Commission is allowed to make. Second condition is pursuant to Section 4.01(c)(6) of the zoning ordinance. If Planning Services staff determines that the parking demand exceeds capacity of the parking lot, then the property owner must construct parking spaces necessary for future traffic, after obtaining site plan approval for the same pursuant to Section 27.02 of the zoning ordinance. So, that's staff's recommendation and report, I'd be happy to take any questions. I'm sorry I went on so long.
Thank you. Very nice.
Don't let it happen again, Patrick.
Yeah, really. Next time, chop, chop.
I know. And it's a modification, not a variance.
March forward quickly, soldier.
So, are you, you must be the project representative, sir? Come on up, and tell, do you have anything briefly to add to that?
He's waited here, he's waited this long.
Nope. John Shear, it's 5260, and also 5100 South Hagerty Road.
And what, who are you, sir?
My name is John Shear, I represent Precision Strip. Yeah, just basically what this gentleman just said right there, Patrick, and I really have nothing to add, unless there's questions. But, yeah, it's just a little bit of remediation work, to remove a couple parking spaces.
Okay.
Have 34 employees on this campus right now, so...
Okay. Anybody from the commission have anything to say?
I'm always gonna be in favor of removing parking spaces.
Me too. You have a sympathetic... Okay, who's allowed to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll make it.
Okay, oh, good.
If you're calling for motion, Madam Chair, I move to approve 147 parking spaces, as illustrated on the parking site plan for Precision Strip at 5100 South Hagerty Road, parcel 140-99-0012-705, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, and subject to the following conditions. One, the site plan review requirements of Section 27.02 of the zoning ordinance apply for the removal of six parking spaces illustrated on the parking plan. And two, pursuant to Section 4.01(c)(6) of the zoning ordinance, if Planning Services Division staff determines that the parking demand exceeds the capacity of the parking lot, then the property owner must construct parking spaces necessary for future traffic, after obtaining site plan approval for the same pursuant to Section 27.02 of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins, and support by Commissioner O'Con. Any further discussion? No? All right. Commissioner O'Con, could you please call a vote?
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Con, yes, sorry, it took, you were the last one on the agenda. Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Madam Chair Zuber?
Yes. And I'm used to being last with my last name, but anyway...
So, you said come back here for site plan review on this?
For modifications to industrial sites, a lot of times, the site plan review, if it's minor enough, can be staff review only. So, they will have to go through site plan review for that. This is just to modify the parking spaces, so that when they do go through site plan review, it's not another step of the process, where we have to get a modification.
Good luck with your parking lot modifications.
Thank you for your patience.
And thank you for your patience. And these are always this much fun, so feel free to come... Yeah, come back, anytime. We always, we're always entertaining.
All right.
Uh-huh. Okay. Thank you. All right, so we have a staff report that should be fun and exciting. In short. In short, brief. Brief.
But I haven't gotten to speak much yet tonight.
Well, yeah, you've just been over there, you know, smiling, so, as you do.
It's been enjoyable. Okay, I will make this quick. So, for our general update, for the master plan, we're continuing to move forward with our master plan advisory board meetings, and we've had some stakeholder discussions. Those stakeholder discussions have proven very informative. We've conducted a couple with the senior advisory committee. We had a couple with members of the block up on the third floor, teen and youth. And this evening, I was at the youth advisory council, speaking to them about what they want to see in their community. And we've had two independent stakeholder discussions at the Village Arts Factory for the town, Cherry Hill Village and the Town Square Project. That included residents, business owners, property owners, members of boards and commissions, members of the Village Arts Factory, for all of them to see what's being proposed and what's being discussed. And this was the same information that was being, that was shown to the advisory board, the township board, planning commission, at the April 13th meeting. So we're gonna continue to finalize our stakeholder discussions in the next month. Those will include neighborhoods, housing, transportation, natural features, urban design, and others. In addition to that, the master plan advisory board will be meeting this Thursday, June 8th, here at the administration building, on the lower level, and we're gonna start our discussion on corridors and infill design and retrofit. So that'll be a fun, fun, interesting discussion. At the last meeting, we finished up the three-part discussion on Cherry Hill Village, and had some brainstorming activities on some goals and objective statements. Those draft statements are still being finalized, not finalized, but still being drafted by McKenna, so those will be provided to you at a later date. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I do have a quick question. When does the master plan advisory wrap up?
We have those meetings scheduled until October of this year. We have November and December open, but we still have the dates and the room reserved for those meetings, just in case we do need them. But we're hoping to have the meetings wrapped up, unless there's a discussion that runs long and runs into a two-parter.
Okay, thank you.
Where's this pin thing?
Social pinpoint?
Township website.
I will send you a link this evening. I'm sorry?
Our morning's probably soon enough.
Sure? Okay, all right, tomorrow morning.
By 6:00 a.m.
By 6:00 a.m., yeah. I'll do it tonight with the delayed delivery, so you get it first thing in the morning. Yes.
We have one more section, we have public comment, and you've been sitting here so long, did you have more to say? You have to go to the mic and tell us who you are again.
Thank you for your service. Glad to see that you have a great sense of humor. Good night.
Oh, thank you, good night.
You're welcome back, anytime.
Yeah, come back.
All the time.
I mean, most people don't do that. Most people are, like, out as soon as we've finished their topic, so...
What's that? Oh, awesome.
All right, well, anybody wanna make a motion?
Move and close the meeting, Madam Chair.
All right.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Really tired.